Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the City Planning Board meeting of March 11th. And I would ask the Secretary, Amy Smith, to please call the roll.
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Here.
Michael Marcot?
Michael Marcot?
Present.
Shannon Cox?
Here.
Lucy Bisson?
Here.
Amy Smith, here. Alex Pine?
Here.
And Lee Albert?
Here.
And for the record, staff members are Shelley Norton, Acting Director and City Planner, Craig Tebow, City Planner, and Linda Tripp, the Administrative Assistant. Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda, Shelley?
No.
And any correspondence? We have received some correspondence that relates to the second public hearing. So we'll discuss it at that time. Do we need to make a motion to accept it?
The correspondence? No.
No, I didn't think so. Okay. At this time, we will be going into executive session. And I would appreciate a motion. Everyone has that motion on the language on your desk. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session regarding consultation with the city attorney pursuant to one MRSA Section 405.6E.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion? I'll call the roll. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
And myself, Lucy Bisson, yes. So we will stop the meeting and we will step out of the room to have an executive session with the city attorney. No notes, no note-taking by anyone.
Don't take my materials.
You can't take your material, but there will be no note-taking.
Good evening. How are you, Christine? Good, that's good.
One thing at a time.
That's right, that's right. That's what I tell myself too. Wait for the moment, I'm not, we'll take that. Oh my goodness, sound of wind and everything, it's terrible. I know it. I tell myself we could have lots of snow, so I try to, try to be grateful. Did you have any water damage in the way? Oh, good for you, good for you. Do, we don't have to, but I heard a lot of stories this morning of water damage. My goodness. But it came down so hard and so fast, it was crazy. My husband says every inch of rain is ten inches of snow. He said, so, you know, that's. Oh my goodness, it'd be frozen, it wouldn't absorb. Yeah. Yes, and we have a well out here. And I worry about the spring, you know, when all the snow's supposed to melt and we're supposed to have moisture that we so desperately need will be lacking. We just went into an executive session, I don't think. Yeah, I mentioned it to Shelley, so the lady was hoping to move it, she looked like we were. And I don't know that they mentioned, um, they had it, might have scheduled it accordingly. Right, right, it's almost, yeah. But I'm sure she might have released the agenda. Yeah, right, that's what I mean, yeah. And I know that they expected. And I do think that for storage, self-storage units will go out of quickly. So that must have been her thought process. Moving from Doug every once in a while. Doug was living in North Carolina and now he moved to Washington State. And now to Washington State. Doug aims to please, he's so pleased. Lily, Lily wants to be near the family. He's a good guy. Yeah. I think I might see him tomorrow night. We're having a small get-together because we're losing one of our buildings, that was this morning. So, you know, nevertheless, so it's such a small get-together tomorrow night. There's a lot planned, so. And I, you know, I can understand. I, when my house stays for a living and I just, I'm sorry, I'm like, what happened? After eight years of working hand-in-hand with him, I just really, yeah. But he sounded good last time I talked to him and hoping to join us tomorrow night for a quick little say goodbye to Nick. Yeah, him and Nick were really close too, so they've had a good relationship with everyone that I'm sure. My goodness. Yes, yes, I remember my very first, first time I was here, David wanted me to do my background, his printing and graphics, and he gave me the LCIP. No, it was the conference. And he said, could you come? So I called and I get a bunch of prints. Oh, he was just, thank you, Mr. Coedlin, we could have, you know, Christine, a lot of the editing with us. He says, she's our proofreader. I didn't know you were so involved, you know? But he, oh my goodness, yeah, I wonder what we'd do without her proofreading. Every time I type it in my minutes, it goes, no. And I tell them, shouldn't I? They go, stop it now. I did it tonight with self-storage because they didn't have a computer. And Microsoft Word's like, maybe I know. But I usually let it be my guide, you know? At the very least, I look at it and I think, okay. Needs to be that way, right? Right? They should be letting invitations, and it was a big thing between people saying honor versus honor. And it would be like, either one is lying or most people are lying. There is, but most people don't use, or you are, you know? So, but, yeah. Yes, I hear, yeah, I still do. Yes, yes, I know, he said the same thing. Yeah, I think, this guy's pretty good, you read it? He told me about it, yeah. Think it well. Right, because something smart. That was witty, yeah. That's witty, yeah, I like that. Good deal. All righty, absolutely. He's a nice man. Oh, really? You worked that long? Where did you work before? You didn't work that long?
This is what it looks like again. In other words, this is where it's going.
Somewhere at the Green Ladel, but they weren't. That's right. No, that's right, for this election. Will be all of them, right, yeah, that's right, I forgot that. They're only joining at one. Yeah, who came in the next day to talk to her for a little bit. Shelley's come up, she says hello, and I'm awfully glad she does. God, I miss that woman. I love her, um, she's just funky. I think you're absolutely correct about that.
The mosque would be able, I'm sure the mosque would be able to, there are many people in there. You know, tell them, yes, yes.
Do they need afterthought?
No.
Okay.
No. No, but I just said, if we have, if that's where we do it, she said, I mean, how many people inside of the mosque? If, if, if. I'm sorry, I didn't. Counting the number of people in there? All right, that's great. These spaces that until we, once you develop that space in the back, then that's where you really monitor, and you really want to monitor in place to be sure that when them looking, will it come and are in the middle? Or what we're saying is the maximum capacity. That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes, we will have to. So after that, it's good luck to them.
This is what Shelley was writing.
Then what is it? Does that make any sense what's written?
I believe it was at our very first meeting. But that would eliminate so much charge. It's like one vehicle, one vehicle.
Yeah, yeah. But that was something they had, they went back on it last time.
Yeah. Shelley said the same thing.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think make it four, if gotten a few more.
That's exactly it. But, no, it wasn't working out that way.
I stopped by last week and they at least have an agenda. And they've done that a couple of weeks ago.
We saw they had, they sent us pictures of, you know, what they were doing. And they had four people on them. And then one over at Coliseum, and then one was driving a van back and forth.
And they had people parked at, at McGraw, parking at McGraw, and the same, musical say.
Today, there was a reference to it, too. And I am trying, we said, very, very angry, it was. So we try a solution, and what we do is actually, and it got.
Yeah. What effect do we have? Big people.
And I always say, I'm like. A good guy and director. Yeah, that's not, that's, depending on what you're looking at. So this, this is, yeah, this is.
This is from the last meeting.
This is.
Yeah, this is, this is from.
For each four people. So they had a ratio of one park as well for each four people. Well, seats is sufficient for the staff observations, two people.
The observations have changed now.
Absol-dah, staff recognition ratio.
In other words, if there is no study, if there is no study or a formal that study needs to be, and if there isn't a study.
Yeah.
They're going to reduce it even further. It's like half a person.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
We'll tell them.
Yes.
Is it the top half of the board?
Exactly. And there's obviously some sort of an error there, it doesn't even reach back to the board. But I was, I was up for four to one belief.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what seems to be the case.
Number four. Is it the same? Yeah. If I'm correct. Oh, um, the agenda, I think it says it.
Okay.
Eight twenty-second and February twelfth.
Okay.
And then I did mine for March.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I wasn't. We just looked at the order.
Uh huh, right. My goodness. Executive session, Michael Sawn, August 9.
Indeed, yeah, indeed. And I think the city council usually does mostly with the end.
Exactly, yeah.
Although I've seen Auburn, Auburn from this time at Torre Cian, but not exactly the one.
Um, I think the others want to do it at the end. I think they did the same with the other man, but he didn't show up till late, but to have him sit three hours in the meeting, pay them this. If there's value in it, I get it.
But when I was, you know, when I worked with the legislature, I mean, people often dreamt about that. They would kick, like, if they were giving a bill of this for, even with a for against, and all people for it were from the, you know, from agencies or whatever. And then people would come to speak for or against. The end of the day, we have to go.
Right, it's a drive all the way back.
Yeah, and it's frustrating.
Like, I think they. Oh, Shelley sent out a nice email the next day saying, listen, this patient, this board is. So she made it pretty clear, but, you know, he actually had a presenter who traveled. You know, and everybody's time is valuable. It happened once again. The people's.
I mean, I briefly considered the historic position.
Yeah, that's a nice point.
Yeah, well, when I saw Jim Leeson, I was getting my car registered, I just picked it up, I was still, I'm going to mobile vehicles.
I don't blame you.
I know some people. Anyway, Jim got his tags, he was putting them on, and he told me he'd just been.
We have a new one on this board, I just found out today. Yeah, it's going to be on the planning board, we have an open seat. So the mayor probably gets somewhere. Yeah. All the votes will be full, I think, for the first time in a while.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Right. So presumably, um, zero. Do you know that? Yeah.
It's like being the, you know, the, in churches, they, you know, pastors can be responsible for. For hospital.
Right, right. It's a big deal, yeah.
But I think even some, some people. Well, that can also. Some other churches. If you are in San, you still may choose to.
Right, exactly.
That's still in here, you know, back in New York Friday.
Oh, my goodness. It's like, well, my mother, we did not even. My mother was a staunch Catholic and we were, they were both CCD teachers. We went to Catholic school. My mother goes, no, when you're giving up the line? And I tried to give up something. That's awful, that doesn't even mean. You need to give up something that you really. You go back and come back and we'll talk about it. And we have until two more days to figure it out.
Well, I, I still remember going to something, getting Catholic schooling, but going to, I think we had swim lessons or something. But we weren't supposed to. Only there was a mess after, I can't remember the whole thing, but all I remember is. And I started getting dizzy with the teacher just.
Because you were going to pass out. Remember being with little kid and trying to let her go. Look at me, yeah, the line is short, get over here. She told me. And I'd say, but man. Then we'd get out. From there, the other line was, I don't care, she's. You know, when she was a little girl in the thirties, it was a bit weird. She said, so it's been driven to me and I, I don't feel like. My gals were sad, you shouldn't really even do restaurants. That was her thing. She said, when she was a little girl, she was sick and my grandfather said, you're going to church anyway. And she said, now she had received communion. And she started to, you know, people. She said, the feast came, I've been laid. She said, so I figure if I can't, I'm going to demand her comes to get me. No, she was just, I mean, this is more than.
Yeah.
You know, you're not doing anything. If you get into a Christian ministry, it's okay. But products of our reason. Looks like, are you talking to someone? That's not the way you. That's your, your voice when you want to. Yeah, what is that? You think you're all mad, you're in the tub or you're playing a game. Oh, my God, you can't, hey. That's how we. My dad wasn't boarding, yeah, but she converted. Yeah, yeah. Research it and understood it. When you're little and it's just imposed on you, you will. Father has to understand and then appreciation that you can. It's still there for that reason. But, yeah.
You know, somebody who. Their parents were at least one of those ways. But if you become a quicker later, they don't say you convert. They say you are convinced. Which I think is.
I like it better. I actually do.
This conversion has to mean all that. You're on the right end of the position, like if you convert now. Right.
Right, exactly.
But being convinced.
That's nice, I like, I like the phrase a lot better, to be honest. Didn't understand it when I was young. You guys are convert, what's that? You know, like. When your father and I got married. Those days, it was a big deal.
I mean. I grew up in that kind of search, but it's.
Where did you grow up?
No, England.
England, oh, nice. I had a friend, we, she, her name was Jamie. Where did she? I met her. Ah, yeah, I met her through a group, a musical.
Oh, yeah.
Group of people, we all. Met together once in Nashville, we all came. Pictures she would send me and. You'll have to come across. She used to say. Do you go home often?
I haven't been, well, between COVID and everything. I've only been twice in the last.
Wow.
Oh, well, all my family.
Yeah, all you. Okay, I didn't know if you all came here.
No, well, we did, but my brother moved back and my parents died.
You didn't have siblings.
My brother and his family and his two kids, well, my nephew is in Scotland. But, but, you know, many friends and stuff, friends with school.
I worked across the street. Building, at least.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Was a Hartnett family for a little while, then.
They were both, they were both very nice.
Oh, they were very nice.
I remember seeing the dad walking up and down.
Yeah. Guy Hartnett, they said he walks to work every day.
He was like Phil, Phil Isaacson, sure, he did the same.
That's nice.
And, and Bird scales too.
Yeah, that's right. My dad used to, he goes to the scales books to work. I'm like, really?
Right across that bridge, you.
Yes, exactly, it's wonderful to see. Yes.
The people for the other room, she worked there too.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I think it's this. Yeah, that's pretty straightforward. Pretty straightforward, actually. They, um, their brand is, I think it's. It's developed for it, you know, I mean, it's great for the area. They have some right up the street. I didn't know they would do that. I actually thought, except when I asked. Always that little daycare. Like, oh, yeah, she goes, yeah, go through. Sam it up, it's like. Yeah, no, check, oh, it's not like, oh, check over. Ah, that's. Oh, that's been roving, that's right, two different, yeah.
Or other weird things like West Bay Street, you know, cross the street tracks.
I have that later. Because someone online and they'll say, I live on, um, River Street. They're telling me they live on River Road, but they live on River Street.
Equally, when I had some friends. They were actually, they were longers from Germany and I was from Africa. And they were working at Farnham House and so. They were women in their fifties or sixties. And so the first time they came, I said, you should come here. Come up to Riverside. Turn right. And here, the Farnham House, right at the bottom of Downing Street. And forever. And firmly, I went down Farnham House and said, what happened? They left ages ago. They had gone down to the river.
Oh.
The side of the river.
Oh, no, rather than Riverside. Oh, my goodness.
I mean, you know, it got cleaned.
Uh-huh.
But it was like, oh, gosh, I felt so stupid, I should have just walked up to the top of the street and. Figured, tell me when you're leaving and I'll come.
Yeah. I had a friend that lived on Riverside Place for a very long time, Don Overmeyer. Passed away a few years ago. It, uh, awful lot of time. With my, with his second. The end of his life, I used to go over quite a bit, bring the boys and sit with him, and he's done. Yeah, and someone bought that house and I go, why do I move so fast?
Well, I.
Nice. So Josh will come next year, right? Yeah. Well, the neighborhood's changed, I hope, I'll follow. My whole life, it was down there, but it's not the same. Um, I was right near Grant's Bakery when it was there, a long time ago. We were probably up more towards Quality Market.
Yeah.
Beautiful neighborhood, everybody had flowers, stuff, lots of lawns. We knew everybody, you know, used to shovel from Miss Van and Miss Quinn. Just, I don't know, I go by there now. The snow melts, I get all discouraged because you can see it.
You know, I, I do. I mean, I know. First, first, my nephew's owl, owl, who did do mail. And she lived in one of the houses, it's probably halfway between. Union Street and, and Savas. But it was sort of backed a little bit, it wasn't. And apparently, when she died about, probably not, it was ten years ago, but I remember her nephew was both going there to help. Not, not the way they first like this. But again.
No. Yeah. They were talking about. Grandmother would. Oh, gosh, she. The sills. You know. I mean, I, I just, I don't know, I think about it and. Except the hallways, the woodwork like this. The mimosas were washing and oil soaked and cleaning each day. Washing the front steps and cleaning the front porch. My father would be, hey, you're. Would you walk right by it? Back right out there and pick it up. Would you walk by something like that again?
We, we went out with my grandmother, same thing after you.
Good, put that in your pocket. Oh, like, you were drunk or whatever. Matter of fact, if we were walking, there was one, you picked it up. Hey, pick that up.
And they'd be. Do you think you should be.
Yeah, maybe she is. Yeah, she should, they'll understand her too, yeah. The deep. The deep. Isn't that something? Where did, where did you work with them? Where did you come from? Where did you?
Well, I was most recently retired from USM, where I was teaching at USM.
And which, which location?
Well, my office was in Gorham, but I taught classes in Fordham, in South Hill, in Fort Worth.
Yeah, how long have you been with us?
Eleven years.
Good for you.
Well, yeah, we're just working, busy working, doing stuff.
But doing things you enjoy and.
There's some things I enjoy, some things I just do because I have to.
Right, right. I always think after I retire, I want to keep busy, I don't want to not work. No, I think there's enough ways I can serve the community and do something that you, that you live in.
Because as I told you, I grew up in England, I wasn't naturalized until after July was in Maine. And, but I started going, because I knew people who were like active here. Legitimize voters and, you know, I'm doing this.
It sounds true.
Dick Wadner was a mediator, he retired from Dave's and taught psychology. But Lois was head of the statewide legitimize voters and it was quite a big group at that time. A lot of them were widows at a time when they didn't have the opportunity to have jobs, but they would have had some free time.
Sure.
And I just go into the city council meeting, so Dick Trachten was one of the cities.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, I go way back to.
Nice, just wanting to know. The, the parents lived next door to the Trachten's. And, yeah, and Lisa told me, they have a yellow lab dog. Lisa said, her dog has horns and oftentimes he's open meeting Tucker Trachten. So their dog is a golden retriever, Tucker Trachten, and Tucker Trachten. And she knows where to go. Linda's here. And he comes, she jumps over the wall, he comes home and gets her, he looks around. She goes, I want to use me as a way to get him home and then I'm not there. She goes, we have to, sometimes we're leaving, we do whatever we can. But she said he'll come home and he'll have Tucker Trachten's boy or his toy. He goes to his house and he grabs stuff. She goes, I bagged stuff up and I go next door and I'm like, I think all of this belongs to Tucker. Dick Trachten's dog, yeah.
Were they, were they both of the same gender?
Yes, they both were male.
So, so you're not going to end up getting some of the puppies.
Exactly, yeah, not going to have these golden lab puppies, yeah, but, yeah.
These days, people don't have, have golden lab.
No, they sure are, they're not inexpensive at all. Man we work with upstairs, he greets them and he's always trying to, you look like you need a puppy. No, no I don't, I go home with a puppy, my husband's not going to be pleased. Well, how about a cat? Can I interest you in a cat? You look like you need a kitten. I don't, I can't.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Lucy was talking about her pet today, like her cat has diabetes, she just found out. And the dog went in to have his ear fixed, they found a mass in his abdomen. And she was like, I just, it's not been a good week, she was telling us. And said, you're gonna have a pet and take care of my console line today.
I enjoyed, I enjoyed sort of dog sitting with friends and.
Right, right.
But especially when I was, well, teaching and when I was working in Augusta, I mean, I left at seven fifteen in the morning.
A time like that.
And it's hard when I was teaching, again, I had night classes off.
Right, and it makes it hard because you, you know, your mind is, you know, it's not fair, that's not right, yeah, yeah, I agree. Husband and I never had children and we had two dogs. And we've been married thirty-six years and we've had a dog for thirty-two of them. And we took a vacation for our thirtieth anniversary, we've never done that. And I said, you know, we never go anywhere because we're, to leave a dog, you know, you love him so, you don't want to bring him to a kennel. We don't have one now, and he's like, no, let's not get one right away, maybe when we're older, when I retire and I stay home more. But even then.
Well, when you can get used to not, not having one, that's flexibility.
Right, because I mean, if you have, if you have children.
Or those who would take care of them for you, that's one thing.
And I don't, I don't, my family, my dad, my sisters, everybody's. Yeah, my sister was a young lady who got hit by the car by a burger on Elizabeth Street. That was my sister Christine, she was only fifty-two, she had young children and they're all over the place, they're not here now. She's been gone probably eight years and the kids have grown back. So once in Texas, my mom's gone, my dad's gone. I back up, it's far away.
Yeah, I mean, I'm top of the first chain here because my brother's younger. I had only three cousins and there's only one mother. She has, she's, she's about three months younger than I am, but her brother died and my brother doesn't have, because I'm missing dad.
You are, isn't that something, huh?
It does feel kind of funny.
It does feel weird, it does. I know my dad left, I said that twice. You know, losing my mom was one thing, I was always in my twenties. And then my dad got something unusual that nobody ever gets and he had a Gillian's Parry. And, yeah, and I said to my husband, it's amazing that you can be.
I'm an orphan.
This is weird, I'm like, it doesn't even make sense, I'm a footballer woman, you know. You're forty years old, you're always. You know.
This is funny.
Yeah, they are, so, do you have children? You did, you like that, neither do we. My mother used, I used to say, you know, man, maybe we should have kids. I go, what happens if we get older and older and don't have children, just need company in your day. There's a woman who had eight children that were lonelier than women like us. It's not really about me, it's worrying about Peter. I don't mind myself, but I think of my husband, and she's like, it's still. And then we just, we just, we had sixteen, we had two sons and. My husband comes from a family of five boys, so he has to mix up from my small one.
Balances.
Yeah, exactly.
He was married, luckily, as it turned out, he didn't have kids.
He did, yeah.
He died when he'd been crushed.
Did you remarried? No, that was announced.
Well, it was bad, yeah, it was bad enough to be.
Right, right, yeah, not the best experience, like you want to do it again.
By the time you think you might.
Yeah, time goes, you're exactly right, exactly right. I actually feel, feel like. My husband's always like, where would you be without Carol and Kelly? I said, we do things all together, because he doesn't enjoy it. You know, he's not a fan of certain kinds of ocean or the ocean, he's a freshwater man. So the girls will make him.
Fish, he fishes?
Yeah, he likes the ocean, like. No, he's really good, cool water and, oh, jeez, the ocean, even if I don't go, you know, I come home and I feel dirty. I'm like, oh, I love that feeling.
Yeah.
So, yeah. But to each his own and that's why I have girlfriends to do the things.
But I think it's, you know, I remember my parents were, you know, pretty similar, they had early interests, early on, they both played tennis and cycling and. And then afterwards, I mean, after they did us, you know, when we were. And they, and they were friends with another couple. My mom would go, they'd take the bus and train her to Manchester. My dad and Auntie Kathleen would take us kids to a.
What does that do with the? Right, right, and it's funny, I have a girlfriend and her and my husband have things to enjoy and I'll say, take, go with Carol. She'd love to go, I'm working anyway and you're, it would be weird if I, oh, Carol. And I'll ask her, do you think, oh no, that'd be wonderful, I'd love to go with her. So, you know, I, I get what you're saying and I don't think anything of it, I have a friend who, gosh, unless your husband go, listen, if I can't trust my husband to leave the house and I can't trust him to leave the house, it doesn't matter who he goes with. I said, I have no, no worry, I have no qualms with that, you know, they always say that, you know, he is, he has to have that. My dad was like, oh, your husband, let me go, let me go. I don't, we're not, we're not in the, not in the dark ages here, you know what I mean? I said, but you need to let me go, Peter wants me to go, he wants me to do the things I enjoy, hurry.
You know, you come back and you say what you did and it's that vicarious experience.
Exactly right, and he's like, if it fills you and it makes you happy and it's what you want, I wouldn't want to deprive you of it. I'm glad you don't force me to go, you know, so.
I'm sure you'd say, I believe you don't make your hearts.
Exactly. But I try to do a lot that he likes as well, you know, so, gotta give a little, get a little, you know.
Exactly. He takes up some like NASCAR racing.
Yeah, that's what's going to happen, me either. I say that to my husband, he'll watch a race sometimes. The day twenty-five hundred, that's like a thousand left-hand turns, you know, I'm not interested.
Formula One.
You do, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I've watched, where my brother lives in England is very near one day. One time I was visiting down that weekend. The whole was satisfied with the training.
Qualifying?
Yeah. It was cool about, but it was fifteen plus. And then the, the day of the, after the race was over. Leaving from the park and like taking the, you know, the big gifts. But it was, I've never seen so many health records.
And those cars were crazy. That's amazing, yeah.
But it's, it's, it's kind of, it's interesting to see the ways in which the skill that people have to see. We used to go at the, as near as the, the torture beach of northern England, Blackpool, which has a tower like the Eiffel Tower.
Okay.
They, in the base of the tower, they have like a zoo and there's a, and they have machines, penny machines, like slot machines. When you get, you know, my brother would try racing cars, you know, using the wheels or how, winding wheel, how fast the baby drank the milk and those kinds of things. But I've always liked the race, the car wheel things and, and.
There's a book I just read, it was about the same old race driver that died. Dried in the rain.
A real, this is about a real person?
Yeah, and it's supposedly after like a real person. Yeah, I think it's. And it's just Formula One drivers and it's just amazing, it takes you into sort of your sense, to what they do and how it works.
Well, I know danger, my next-door neighbor where Josh lives now, his barns, he worked down at the living mill. And he told me about how they made the fireproof fabric and some of that, some of it was used in the right lining. But it was also used for making fireproof suits.
I'm down right to the corner of my eye, in fact, right on the corner, right. I went in there one day and I saw what they did in there and I was going, man. A man who was working there, Rance, had worked for a long time for the Falcon, there's a Falcon Corporation, his name was Rance Ranger. And they hired him after Falcon closed for their production.
Raise your rants.
I go, Rance Ranger, he goes, I know, my father, it was from a comic book in the thirties, that my dad. So Rance was the manager down in Boston. And it's one way, I saw what they do, they do all kinds of things. And they make like liners for these monster boats, put the motors in, they do things for the monks where they go and rap. They, they do rap thing. It's amazing and they're all in there sewing, the machine is almost as big as things because he's like, oh no, this thing is thirty-two feet long and he's sewing.
I just like making sails too, I mean, same kind of thing.
Right here in this clarity, you wouldn't think. He says the fabric makes you kind of, it's a little bit, it's got some stuff orbit in it.
Oh, well, no.
Well, I, I have to say, this evening being on the agenda tonight, with Ramadan, it's a surprise that wasn't discussed. Surprised the applicants didn't bring it up to me, no, Shelley's not going to be aware of Ramadan, but the applicant. Okay. He might be.
But I mean, I know that certainly at the university, they have the school. But I hope he was in the deep potential here at the end of the last meeting. But, but the point is, again, they were trying to accommodate, but it's known that they've gone on for three years.
Right, right. I obviously can't go back there and say anything, so, yeah, it'll be what. I agree, and I, I have to say, I mean, I feel like if I'm, if I'm this applicant, I'm not going to be doing this on this evening without discussing the fact that I need to be in and out early, I don't, I don't know why that wasn't a consideration. Yes, it's second. In case when she comes out, you may have to, and I get all these people in here.
But we. Good Friday or having a meeting.
Yeah, it should not have been today, it either should have not been lined up this way or it shouldn't have been today.
Well, frankly, wouldn't, I would have thought at least, Shana would know, because I mean, the chair has to be aware of this.
I don't know, I mean, you said Shana's aware of it today, I wasn't, I don't. I learned to know what Rasha Shana and everything was. A discussion, if they're not out in turn and these people go, guess what, they're going to come back and find out. Right, right.
Well, if they have to be at the.
It's six thirty.
But they can't, it's going to have to be Monday.
Right, right, and I mean, the next meeting is on a Monday too. So they're still in Ramadan, they'll be in for, based on what I was reading. I'm just trying to educate myself about it, because I was like, I didn't quite understand it all and, I mean.
Well, the timing, but yes, we knew that egg was the start of it.
I think it was, like I said, it's, it's, I feel bad, I feel like it's poor planning on, on their part. No, and it, it. But I think you're right, I mean, if they have, if they have to go, they'll, they'll lose and Shelley will find a woman to, so that's what happened. I feel bad, just because I know. Right, yeah, I believe he's the, I think he's the first one, you did, yeah, I think he's the first one. Agenda and I'm not sure that he. I think they did that first.
The, the self-storage.
And that was going to be correct because, and that's why, and they knew this wouldn't be. Well, I didn't know about the executive session when we were coming, I was getting the agenda and stuff ready and Shelley goes, well, we have executive session first.
It has to be announced.
Yeah.
Advances are going into it.
Sometimes like Christine said, the city council tends to do actually. I've been doing this for eight years and we see two, who's actually sending me. The first, the other one is ten minutes.
Maybe we should go make sure there are no bodies on the floor.
Right.
The archetypist not yet showed up, oh, there's a good reason.
My building inspector Tom Maynard. We go into Tom's office and they go, let me, I said, you can't just go in and look. You have to go in and walk on the other side of his desk because someday I expect to find him. And I would tell him, I would tell him, hey. Oh my God, I would talk to him, he'd be like, it's okay Linda, I'm going to go home at lunch and take extra insulin. And I go, it doesn't work that way. My father's diabetic, my aunt's diabetic, I know, it doesn't work that way. Tom, I adore you and it's okay if you want to do what you want, but you had three donuts with electricity. You were severe diabetic. Yes, he was, but he's going to die. He was only sixty years old. And he had health issues, but that's what I would tell the girl, don't just peek in his office. Walk around the desk because one day you're going to find him. And they're up, there we go. They have been in for one or six, uh, yeah, I'll mention it to Shelley, yeah.
I do, I've got to do, I've got to. I got to do that.
Yeah, given that we're just starting the hearing. Will I wish that I should go in like twenty-five minutes in the middle of the, yes, probably, but I can't. Thanks for your patience.
No, no worries.
Keep on being patient. Craig, do you have the original applicant for public hearing five B? I wasn't here that meeting, there's two of us, and I don't know that we have a paper copy of the original application.
Uh, we must, yeah, I don't know if they have it here with us right now, but probably.
Whichever one of you is not handling public. Good chat. Could you print the original application that we're referencing today, whoever is not presenting public A?
Oh, I'll be.
I would like one and Mark, since you work here for January, would you like one as well? You know what, you're great.
Shannon was.
I would love one.
Okay, we have returned from executive session and our first public hearing is Tomb Lake Capital LLC has submitted a development review application for the development of a self-storage facility on one point six two acres at thirteen nineteen Sabates Street. Craig.
So we're looking at a one point six acre vacant lot with access on Sabates Street and Chadbourne Road. The applicant has proposed eighteen thousand five hundred square feet of new structures with approximately thirty-five thousand square feet of total impervious area. There's no parking required by the ordinance for self-storage facilities that do not have an office. And so the project is designed so that visitors will temporarily park along the twenty-four foot wide drive aisle. There's no water or sewer connection proposed and the project will be connecting to electricity from an adjacent CMP pole. Property is located within the highway business zoning district and the use for wholesale sales, warehousing, distribution. sales, warehousing, distribution facilities, and self-storage facilities is a permitted use. There are some wetlands located on the southeast portion of the property. They have been previously, or a portion of that has been previously impacted, and a permit from MDEP was, was received. No further disturbance is planned to those wetlands, and the remaining wetlands and vegetation shall help to provide a buffer from the adjacent residential property on Chadbourne Road. Staff's comments have been met. They're satisfied, and staff recommends approval of the proposed project with the following conditions: that an entrance permit be obtained from DOT prior to constructing access to Sabata Street; that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all stormwater and site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan; and that a note shall be placed on the site plan stating this; and three, that annual stormwater inspections, a post-construction stormwater management performance guarantee, and a MS four area post-construction performance guarantee shall be required. You'll see a motion or an action necessary, and that's all we got.
Thank you. Okay, anyone on the board have any questions for staff? Yes, Shannon?
It's just a quick one, Craig, but on the third condition that you just named, the performance guarantee and the MS four shall be required on file. It just feels like the way in which we require proof of something deliverable or completed prior to is really challenging with the inspection. So is it like an annual stormwater inspection schedule shall be filed? Does this language get like?
Typically recorded in the county.
We're the one doing requiring, and yet we're asking them to do the thing, and it just feels like the language is a little backwards on number three.
So I think the performance guarantee is filed with the county registry of deeds, and in that it requires the annual stormwater inspections be done. So we, we have kind of a set form that we have pulled together with language for that.
Okay, so this language is sufficient to, to actuate that? Okay. Yes, Michael.
So the performance guarantee is akin to a performance bond, right? Just to have something with the registry of deeds saying that you have it?
Yeah, so there's a couple different formats I think that that can take. I mean, there could be a letter of credit. There's, there's different.
So there's an assurity that, no, that's in place, so that they just don't go forward without it?
Anyone else? Okay. In that case, I would ask the applicant to please identify yourself and, you know, give us your spiel.
Good evening. My name is Travis Latelier, here to represent Tomb Lake Capital, engineer responsible for the plans and the application you have in front of you. I don't have a whole lot extra to add more than what, what Craig described of the project. It, it will incorporate just over a hundred self-storage units. It will be gated in and accessed through key cards at both entrances. It will be, storage facilities are notoriously low traffic generators, so we don't anticipate any, any issues with, with additional traffic. Stormwater is being handled on-site. Underground storage is being provided and mitigating peak flows, and no additional wetland impacts are proposed. But other than that, I'd open it up for questions and.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have, on the board, have questions of the applicant? Michael, please speak a little closer to your microphone, please.
Maybe a comment because I'm not finding what I'm looking for, but under review standards, be traffic movement into and out of the development area. I see where you say that you have a traffic analysis has been prepared for this project. Is that in the packet, the analysis?
It should be, yes, yeah. There was a, I prepared a traffic assessment.
Is that a separate staple?
Yeah, it's one of the.
Traffic assessment.
Traffic assessment, okay.
So essentially, we're looking at, I think, a peak of one or two trips in the peak hour. It's, it's.
Now I remember looking through this, but I was looking for the lighting study, and there it is. I was having a hard time finding that type of diagram.
Yep, yep.
I'm impressed that you do have the traffic assessment here. I think all development review applicant should do so, as well as the financial capacity, which I see at the bottom of your packet as well from Hampton National.
Yep, yep.
Very, very impressive. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else have any questions of the applicant? No? In that case, I will open it up to the public. If you wish to speak for or against this project, would you please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak on this particular issue. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this issue? Seeing none, I will close it to the public and bring it back to the board for any further discussion, or I will entertain a motion. Anybody feel like making a motion?
Happy to.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the application submitted by Tomb Lake Capital LLC for a new self-storage facility at thirteen nineteen Sabata Street meets the necessary criteria contained in the zoning and land use code, including, but not limited to, Article thirteen, Section four approval criteria, and that approval be granted with the following conditions: that an entrance permit be obtained from DOT prior to constructing access to Sabata Street; that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a professional engineer must provide a stamped statement indicating all stormwater and site improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plan; and that a note shall be placed on the site plan stating this; and third, an annual stormwater inspections, a post-construction stormwater management performance guarantee, and an MS four area post-construction performance guarantee shall be required. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Amy or Roger. Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
Yes.
Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the second public hearing this evening is for the Masjidul Salam Mosque has submitted a development review application to expand the existing parking lot and increase the occupancy of their existing building located at two hundred and forty Bartlett Street. The item was continued from the January eighth and twenty-second and February twelfth meetings. Shelly.
Okay. So at the last meeting, there were some questions from the board. I've included in your packet a copy of the deed which has the description of the easement to benefit the adjacent neighbor to fifty-six Bartlett Street. I've included information from our assistant fire chief regarding occupancy, as well as the state fire marshal's approval from last year of the architectural plan that the architect put together. And then I noticed that there was an error in the packet that we had posted online, so the letter from the engineer appears to not have the most current letter, so that was included. There was also a question about how that easement is configured. There's no plan that I was able to find that was filed. It appears to follow the property line and then be twenty feet wide. Staff has provided a set of findings of fact for review by the board. The intent with this is to clarify what's being asked, and then also for the board to go through and make a determination on the approval criteria. I will note that as we put this together, there was a discrepancy in the application between what the engineer's letter was asking for and what the site plan or the architectural plan showed. So that's the first paragraph in the findings of fact lists out that the request is for twenty-three new parking spaces for a total of forty-eight parking spaces on-site, given that there's twenty-five existing. That the, the engineering letter was asking for a hundred and forty-one people as the new occupancy to the southern portion, which is currently being used for ninety-four people, which was the approval in 2012, and then for a request of using the northern portion of the building for seventy-three people. The northern portion of the building was in the 2012 decision by the planning board, limited in that it couldn't be accessible until the planning board, such time that the planning board would provide approval for that. So they are asking for removal of that limitation on the northwestern side of the building to allow a women's section to be used, and then increased occupancy for the southern portion, which is the men's area, and that increased parking lot expansion. If you go down to the bottom of that paragraph, you'll see that the site plan, or, sorry, the first floor architectural plan that was submitted shows eighty-four person occupancy in the northern part of the building and a hundred and twenty-four in the southern portion. When discussing that with our, or discussing with our fire department, because the two wings of the building are very separated, when people exit the building in an emergency, it was believed that they would really exit separate from each other from those two distinct wings. So it is recommended that you would do an occupancy for each of those wings if you are allowing that northwestern side to become in use. There's also a question
in our. I'm sorry, Shelly.
Yes.
Is there any way that you could bring up the application or site plans that were provided previously on the screen so that we can make sense of the references that you are offering as you go? I apologize for interrupting.
No, that's fine. Craig, did you bring the mosque application?
Yeah, you see the folder, there's a T forty document.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Should be.
I don't, okay. We might have to get that for a minute.
Yeah, I can run that.
Yeah, if you don't mind for having that. Or I could get it off the website, in fact. Why don't we try that?
Thanks, Shelly.
Yep.
This is a great public lesson on how to find planning board agendas for the public in general.
So is it primarily the floor plan and the site plan that you're looking for, Shannon?
Yeah, when you're referencing the northwest and the occupancy and how it's divided, it'd be helpful to see the building as it relates to. I'm a Girl Scout, so I'm pretty good with a compass, though. It's just helpful to have a picture.
So why don't we look first at the site plan, which will give you some context, and then we'll look forward. So this is the northern portion, and maybe see if we have a, there's your north arrow there. So this is the portion currently in use, which is the southern portion of the building, which the 2012 planning board decision limited to ninety-four person occupancy. This middle portion of the building has bathrooms and a corridor, and then this is the portion of the building not currently in use that the 2012 decision deemed couldn't be used until a future allowance by the planning board.
Yeah, that's, that's a good, that's the one you want.
Yep.
So they're asking for seventy-three in the women's and a hundred and forty-one in the men's, according to.
Yeah, that's the letter from Jason Potter asks for that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, can you just leave that up?
One item for the board to consider is our current ordinance regarding parking allocates for a religious facility, one parking space for every four fixed seats. As we've stated in the documents planning has put together, the use of the facility is not with fixed seating in the assembly areas. It's standing or seated on the floor. So the applicant has proposed using ten square feet per person as the, the number to work with for determining occupancy. Planning staff has no issue with that request, and so that would be something for the board to consider. I will point out that the, the floor plan, which was submitted, the fire marshal uses seven square feet per person because that's the number the fire marshal uses for a more condensed congregating of individuals. They also have a fifteen square foot per person, which is a less compacted number that they use. The reason the applicant has stated that they're proposing the ten square feet is based on the demarcations that they have on the floor. They have a per rug with squares on it that are approximately ten square feet. I think I'm happy to answer questions, but I think that's where we are as far as just an update.
Okay, Michael.
Sometimes math escapes me, even though I do it all day long. It's just numbers start to pile up. You said seven square feet is what the fire marshal is using to get to three hundred?
I don't know as it's to get to three hundred, per se, but that's what they use for the National Fire Protection Association numbers. There's different standards, and one of them is for.
Seven, and I heard you say fifteen somewhere.
Yes.
What's that for?
So that's for a less compact, you know, if people are standing, spread out more versus like you're all packed in for, you know, like a concert or something like that, right? So they have a couple numbers that they use at, at the state level and, and in our fire department.
So if the state fire marshal is using seven square feet, that'd be twenty-one hundred square feet. Is that twenty-one hundred square feet, more or less?
I'm sorry, what's that? What are you doing with seven?
I'm only reacting to this because I'm hearing it now, but I'm curious as to how many square feet we're talking about as, as the beginning number. So where's the total on this? It's probably adding a couple of numbers together.
Doesn't, doesn't give a total.
So what the architect has done, and we could have him come up and, what the architect has done, and we could have him come and speak to this, is he's limiting the area for prayer, you know, with this wall that's being built. So, and I'll zoom in a little more because the font is small, but we've got eight hundred and seventy square feet of parish space being used, which at seven square feet is a hundred and twenty-four people. So that's where he's come to the occupancy on the men's side by locating this walled area, so that this would be more of a lobby area, but not the prayer area. And then similar on the women's side. There's this wall that's being added to limit the prayer area to five hundred and ninety square feet, which gets you to an eighty-four person occupancy at seven square feet.
Can you say the, can you just scroll so we can see the men's square footage?
Yeah.
It was just above when you started talking about it, sorry. Eight seventy. Thank you.
So the plans are using seven first square feet, not ten square feet?
That's right. That's right. Um, yeah, so that's a discussion that could be had with the applicant on that.
But that's just for the prayer space, that doesn't include the administrative space.
Two prayer spaces combined.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Mark.
So I'm not understanding the, if they were gonna, if-
The microphone.
I'm sorry. I'm not understanding if, uh, the difference, why, why is the 10-square-feet coming into play? And wouldn't that just necessarily mean a lesser occupancy level?
Yes.
It would be a lesser occupancy, yes.
Were you voting on that?
In dis- well, in discussion with the applicant, um, staff had said, um, you know, the, they were using the seven-square-feet because that's what the fire marshal uses for determining occupancy for fire purposes. Um, when it comes to our ordinance, there was nothing, um, specific. There was the one, um, you know, four seats per-
Yeah.
-per parking space for, um, not for religious facilities, but for another type of assembly occupancy, and our code, eight-square-feet was suggested. Um, so as far as the parking standard goes, there was nothing that really said what would, we would use instead of seats. So the staff was working with the applicant to figure out what would be reasonable, um, because this was an actual number that they have in their facility. Uh, it was recommended as a suggestion. I think certainly it's fine to have that discussion with the applicant as to whether, um, you know, whether 10, 7, where you guys want to land on that for figuring out what, how, how you would allocate, uh, space for a person.
No, what I'm, what I'm not understanding is, uh, even at 10, i- if we were going to do it at 10-square-feet, why does this say 214 people? Because if at, at 10-square-feet, you're looking at 59 people in the women's area, 87 people in the men's area, and then one person per office, right, roughly? So that's three office spaces. That's 90-plus.
You get to about 149 for total.
Ninety plus 59, you get into 140, yeah, 149, okay.
So I believe what the architect did, or not the architect, the engineer who put the letter together was, he used those, um, those lobby areas.
Mm-hmm, as additional space.
Yeah, so he, he took the total, like, for example, on the women's side here, he took the total of this prayer area and this inner lobby, he added that total square footage, and then did your 10-square-feet, which is how he got to that.
That wouldn't really make much sense.
And then he did that over here as well, so that's, that's what that number, where that number comes from.
I get that that's probably why he's doing it, but that, it, it would either be just 10-square-feet based off of the, as far as I'm concerned, it would either be 10-square-feet based off of the prayer area, and you ignore the lobby area, square footage, or 7-square-feet for the entire area, right, the entire square footage? Because they're not praying in the lobby area, correct?
Right, and so-
So it wouldn't really make much sense as far as if you're gonna replace seats with prayer areas, doesn't really make much sense to-
Yeah, the lobby area typically, you wouldn't really count that towards parking.
Right.
You know, it's just kind of a space that people are loitering in.
There's a discrepancy between those numbers and what's noted on the plans. So here, the occupancy is on the men's prayer areas and not on the lobby, and the lobby doesn't note an occupancy. And so I'm just, I'm just distinguishing that the numbers provided here don't line up with the Woodbury numbers.
Correct.
Great. Glad we got that on the same page.
Yeah, we are.
Yes, Alex?
Just to understand the sort of change in condition and make it, make it clear, right now, the wall that Ramp B goes through is currently closed off, and only the things on the right-hand side of that wall are being used, and that's where the current occupancy is for, or?
I think it would be best if the applicant comes up and speaks to that.
Got it, okay, well-
Yes, if you would please come up, Mr. Hamilton, and, and, and so that you can, explain to us where you're getting your 10-square-feet and 7-square-feet, because it says 7-square-feet up there, why are you saying 10-square-feet in your letter?
Right, right, we were talk, the 10-square-feet really talk to parking, because we were, we were trying to figure, this, there's a, there's three years between all of this. And originally, when I was asked to look at the building, it was being looked at from the life safety point of view, and that's when we were using the seven per, that the, that the state was using. Now, we're saying that as far as the occupancy of the building is concerned, 10-square-feet is approximately the area of a prayer rug, prayer rug.
Right.
And this was sort of to simplify it and make it understood, hopefully understood by all of us, since we're not all familiar with that. And that was how we arrived at the numbers that we're trying, trying to balance with the parking.
Right, so in the men's area, it's 870 square feet, so if you're using 10-square-feet, that's 87 people.
Correct.
Eighty-seven.
That, that, that wall in the middle, that red wall that's right in the middle, could be, could have been moved anywhere. You know, we, it was, it isn't there yet, so if they needed a little bit more-
So you could make it a larger space.
We could, we could make it slightly larger to be exactly, you know, right on there, right on that number, and that's not a problem. You know, the, the, the mosque would like to have, their, their objective is to have,
According to this, it's 141 men in the men's area and 73 in the women's area.
Right now, that's the way that represents right now. But the objective, the maximum objective that the mosque is, is suggesting, and asked me to reflect, was, uh, 30 spaces for the women, which is a lot less than we showed there. And, because this building was never designed as a mosque, and that's part of the process.
Well, we know that.
Yeah, I know that. And the, and the men's, we would make adjust, we could adjust the space in the men's side, which if we use the whole space, is much bigger, and we'd be willing to, I mean, I have no problem locating that wall or adjusting the space so it reflects what they want, which is, is a 60, is a hu, is 100, the total number of men.
According to this, it's 141.
Does that leave 18 parking spaces for men, based on your math of 48 being total requested and 30 being reserved?
No, no, let's, let's, let's leave the, let's leave the parking out of it for a second.
Thank you.
It's, it's just the numbers of people that the mosque is looking to have, which is 30 for women, a combination for 30 for women, and-
Right, but you're talking 30 people, 30 women on the women's side, and, and not, you're not talking parking spaces right now?
I says not, no, I'm not talking-
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that we're talking apples and apples, okay?
Absolutely, apples and apples.
Okay, so we're talking 30 women in the women's area?
Correct.
Instead of the 73 that, that has, Shelley has. And then how many in the men's area? According to the, to Shelley's notes, we have 141. Is that still accurate?
162 for wom, for men.
So that's a total of 192 people?
Correct, for the whole, for the whole building.
For the whole building, yeah, that's what I mean.
That's correct. And, and that information wasn't available to me when I did the drawings of the building.
Right, so that wall would have to be moved, uh, or not, not shown at all?
As long as it's a, can supply that much space.
Correct, okay. All right, so does anybody understand that, that math? I mean, okay.
So just, just-
Yeah, absolutely.
So, this plan was not drawn to satisfy the occupancy that the mosque actually wants.
Well, remember, this was done three years ago on the mosque, no, no, I haven't said.
Whenever it was done, I'm just saying, today, the one that we're looking at does not reflect what the mosque wants for occupancy.
It'll, it'll, it'll accommodate it, but it wasn't designed for that.
But it's hard to-
No, I totally-
I think we're talking about intent, is what Amy's question is.
Intent, exactly.
Is when we're talking about the goal of the mosque, the intent of the application in front of us today, and the increase in both occupancy and correlating parking spots, the intended request is, because we've got a couple of variants of numbers, as well as square footage and requests of spaces, and we understand and have heard you say that there is a timeline here, of which time has elapsed and things have changed, but today, the request and the application in front of the board, and the intent of the mosque and the application they're asking, I think Amy is saying, could you reiterate that for us so that it meshes with that which we are reviewing?
Yes, the intent today is to provide a balance for the parking and for the space, so that you'll have 30 women and 162 men. That, that's, that's where it is today.
Okay.
That wasn't even a, a number that you could honestly understand, or, or know when this was planned, was put together, but it won't change the, the large space of the whole building.
Right, right, well, the, the exterior will not change, correct. Alex?
Then just a quick clarifying question for staff. Since we already have an approval for the existing, the part of the building that's already in use, we would be adding, uh, an amount to that area, um, based on the numbers? Or, or is that, are we just adding to a total number for the whole building? Because I remember that we, we got a, um, copy of the original decision that said, "A future planning board will have to consider occupancy for the second half of the building because, um, you know, of the landscape and things like that." So just, just making sure that we're really clear, when we're talking about occupancy, how, how, how are we dividing that number up if we're dividing it up at all?
Yeah, so I think the original approval was for 94 people in the southern portion of the building, which is referred to as the men's area. So they're asking for an additional 68 people for a total of 162 people in that men's, um, southern section, and then asking the board to approve the use of the northern portion of the building for 30 women.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments?
I guess I would also point out that this is an increase over what is shown on the plan in the men's area.
Yes.
So, I don't know if we need to have the fire department review that as a condition possibly of approval, or just have them approve it prior to a decision.
Yes, absolutely.
So candidly, there is some discrepancies in a couple of places, and as I review this and the standing precedent, the 25 spots, parking spots that are already approved, and the 23 that are being requested, would give a total of 48, and using the existing precedent of one, uh, one parking spot to four occupants, that would give this property 48 spots, and 48 spots, and this matters because the number's a little off of what's currently being requested. So, we'd be looking at 192 occupancy total, what you've proposed verbally, of which is not meshing with what we're seeing here or in prior documents, so just put a pin in that for a second, that if we were to say precedent and approving 23 additional parking spots would put us in a position for a total occupancy of 192 for the entirety of the building, of which, based on precedent and the 2012 decision, your application would need to come back to us with a division of how you wanted to put the occupancy relative to the men's, the women, and the administrative spaces within the 192 total that the potentially approved parking would allow as maximum occupancy for people for the building as a whole. And personally, that all is good math and makes sense to me. We would need a new application that shows that consistently on the site pan, plan, and has that allocation there, because it would, I would be uncomfortable approving an application today that has these wide variances. And so if we're looking at this as an opportunity to provide some feedback about what it would take to maximize occupancy with the existing 25 plus 23 newly approved, then we would need the site plan that matches that, based on the 2012 decision.
Yeah. I don't blame you for feeling that.
That's just my personal comfort level with having to act on what's in front of us today.
I have no problem with that, and I, and if you think I'm going to do that in my head right now in front of you, you will not see that magic.
I don't think we can do it in our head either, and that's part of like, every once in a while, we can be like, we think it's five shrubs, so we'll just put a condition on that. This is not that scenario, and I wouldn't be comfortable estimating or approving something based on-
No, no, I would not, I would not either.
And if the engineer can't do it, then I get a buy on not being able to do it today on the fly.
Okay, so, so you're-
That's just my two cents.
Correct, so you, you're, that would be a recommendation that you would make, would be that we get a new, a new plot plan?
Yeah.
And with the numbers that we're discussing today?
Absolutely.
Before we can go forward on, on this. Shelley, do I have to open it up to the public if we make that decision? Oh, yeah, we, I should, I do.
It's a public hearing, no matter what.
Yeah, it's a public hearing, no matter what, correct? Okay. Uh, okay, so the other item that we disc, that I believe needs to, to be discussed is one of the findings here that, um, regarding the ancillary parking.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that the, uh, the Coliseum parking.
Mm-hmm.
Not on, based on what I said.
Okay, all right, in that case, we're just-
Which isn't, uh, either here or there.
Strictly, that, okay, that's fine. Michael, you had a question?
I'm a little confused, uh, as far as process right now, because, uh, that suggestion sounded almost like a tabling or a-
Like a motion, yeah.
Or, what's the other word that we use? Continuance.
Continuance, yeah.
Um, that, that's what it sounded like, but there are plenty of other items that could be discussed, uh, and if the, if-
Well, we're gonna open it up to the public.
If we're going to request, uh, like, a new application because of that one issue, maybe we should discuss a lot of the other issues.
The other issues.
If we were to go down through the development criteria, one by one, and I envisioned, I don't know if Lucy was on the board with me at the time, there was some sort of development review that I had some real serious heartburn over, and it caused the board to have to go through every one of the criteria, one by one, now with the vote. Gil Osno was here at the time, as I remember. Um, so there are things that I want to raise as concerns, if we were to go through that and as we go through that, and there's a few other items as well. Lucy just, uh, mentioned the Coliseum agreement, and, uh, I'd like to talk about the easement.
So we, should we be discussing the approval criteria now or after the public hearing?
Probably after the public hearing.
After, after, okay. Okay, in that case, I will, um, if any, no one else has any questions at this time? Okay, so I will open it up to the public for public comment. Um, please step up to the podium if you wish to speak for or against this, uh, this project. Everyone gets three minutes once, so, uh, and I will be timing you, and so I am, yes, Alex?
Would it be helpful if I were to indicate to the people speaking how much time they have left?
If you want to, you can, you know, make up your little one-minute thing, your one-minute sign, here, go ahead. If you want to make one up, I've got a, I've got a red pen here. Okay, so Alex will tell you when you've got a minute left of your three minutes, okay? But I am keeping track, and I will cut people off. Um, so, at this point, I will open it up to the public, and if you would please step to the podium if you wish to speak for or against this, um, item. Please step up now, because if nobody steps up, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'm, I'm an impatient type of person. Okay, please state your name and your address, and please spell your name, please, for the record.
My name is Hussein Ahmed.
My name is Hussein Ahmed, 267 Lisbon Street, Lewiston, Maine. My name is spelt as H-U-S-S-E-I-N-A-H-M-E-D. I'm standing here today in support of the proposal put in front of the, from the Islamic Center that is requesting an expansion or renovation or a review of the occupancy of the place we use for worship. I support this because as an individual who lived here and who also pray in the site, we know how important it is for us to get that additional number that mathematically fits the structure of the building. For example, if the discussions that have been put forward here, I'll suggest if the board could also consider the one that gives the most of the occupancy or the higher occupancy because of the fact that when we congregate or we meet in the prayer, we are all against each other, you know, so parked like this. And that gives us way more number that can access the facility. Sometimes also because of the cultural, some people may not understand that we don't use the other open areas that may not have been configured or has been, or may not have been considered during the measurement. Because we also use those spaces to pray just because we need a smaller space where you can stand and fit someone and pray. So you'll find sometimes other open spaces will be able to accommodate more people for the prayers. Most of the time, the prayers take about five minutes, and it is very quick that individuals will not be sitting there or using chairs or staying for a longer time. And that also eliminates the risk of having many, many people staying in the place at the same time or because of a fear of a fire or any other problem arising. I would suggest we have been very successful in this community. We have renovated that building. We did put a lot of money on it. We are willing to do. We are also willing to meet all the required standards or code. But we would like to be considered for this. Because all we are saying is we will meet the required codes that are necessary for all the fire protection, all the state and city requirements for us to be able to use this space. And once we remove some few walls or some few other things that are causing restrictions, the place is going to be very massively big to accommodate all of this. And we would also like if the parking lot could also be considered because we will be developing it, putting more money into this, renovating, improving the standards of living for all those who are living there. One other thing I wanted to suggest quickly, if it fits also this meeting, is we would like to request if we can have meters in the outside parking places.
Thank you.
We can raise money.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against? If you wish to speak for or against, could you please go ahead? And please line up behind this gentleman if you're going to speak so that we can move the process along. Thank you. What's your name?
My name is Mohammed Hassan. I live on 265 Lisbon Street. So one of the main messages I kind of saw from last meeting was that.
Could you speak up, Mr. Hussein?
And one of the main messages I was getting from the board is that the parking problems that the mosque has is one of the main reasons why the board is sort of seeing, like hesitating to approve the onsite expansion. But I think in the past few weeks, and even before that, the mosque has been showing that it is progressing and handling its parking situation. And there have been many volunteers who have been working to make sure members parked in appropriate parking spots and have directed members to the Coliseum parking lot when the onsite parking was full. The mosque has also hired a police officer to stay in the area during the service as extra help for managing parking issues on top of having volunteers. I think there might be concern from some of the board members that the mosque will lose progress or as soon as this is approved, since there might not be pressure to deliver results. And even before this past month, the mosque was already making slow progress with its parking problems. And I do think the pressure it felt the past few weeks helped the mosque to speed up its progress, but it's speeding up in a direction that it was already sort of moving in. So I don't think there's any reason to lack faith in the mosque's ability to continue moving in the right direction. And with the expectation being that the mosque is going to be the one controlling and managing its congregation and how they park, I don't think there's, I think creating more barriers that would make its job harder. Like, there's no need to create barriers that make the mosque's job harder. And approving the expansion of the onsite parking and increasing capacity limits would only help the mosque to be more effective in making sure that their members are not being a source of any serious safety issues on the street or causing problems for neighboring residents and businesses. And also, I heard you guys, I don't know exactly how the parking spaces are used to calculate occupancy, but I don't think the forty-eight spaces should only be the only ones considered because the mosque is making a lot of effort to utilize the parking space at the Coliseum. So I think that that should be somehow calculated into the math as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
How we doing? Matthew Terio, 239 Bartlett Street. And that's M-A-T-T-H-E-W-T-H-E-R-I-A-U-L-T. Coming back in front of the board, we were told, give it three weeks to see if there was any parking issues. And I guess I'm just giving you an update on the parking issues. We have not gone a week that we've had no issues. Most recently, this past week, it was actually Mark Myatt gave us a call because he had several cars that parked actually right in front of his loading docks, preventing his trucks from getting there. He had one of them towed, and actually, we were hired to do the towing for that one. We had several vehicles pull into our entrance, stop, drop people off, leave a car parked there. The previous week, we had Officer Ryan Ganyan that was down there, and he spent the entirety of an hour chasing people both out of our property, Italian Bakery's property, Myatt Sausage's property, to the point that Ryan was actually onsite dealing with individuals blocking the entrance, and people were driving around him still into our yard. He said, this is unreal. He says, I don't even know what to do here anymore. I guess I asked the board, why aren't we asking the police officer that was there his opinion? Because I think that would be pretty valuable as to what's actually going on down there. It, you know, it's this feel-good of everything has changed, nothing has changed that's there. I was told that we should work and try to make things work for the people next door here as well and that I should be accommodating. I tried that. We have a digital sign. I put no parking on it just to try to aid in that there's no parking there. What was I met by staff? I got an email saying that my sign was illegal. Great way to work together, guys. That's what I end up getting is, you know, I try something at my end, and I get told, no, no, you can't do that. Apparently, it's only one-sided here. And I'm trying to ask, as business owner down there, property owners and whatever, what do we do at our end? I've done just about everything. I've met with just about every city staff and board and department, and nobody seems to have an answer for this. But now we're going to increase the amount of people by over a hundred. And even the parking that we're looking at considering wouldn't fix the current issue that we have now without adding a hundred people to it. The Coliseum, that's a one day that they have permission to park there. They use services throughout the entire week. How do you give an occupancy permit based off of an agreement for one day? Is there any teeth that they can go back that this occupancy is only for Fridays? Or is this occupancy for seven days out of the week? I guess we got some serious questions, and nobody seems to be answering me from staff. So I guess we'll see where you folks go with that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against?
If you're planning to speak, can you line up by the window behind the podium?
I'm sorry?
After you start. Others who are planning to speak, if they could line up behind you against the window so that we have an indication that there is still interest. That's all.
Don't worry, I was going here for a second.
Oh, sorry.
Totally agree with my son, Matthew Terio.
Could you give your name and?
Sure. My name is Dennis Alterio. I live at, I don't only live, I live and own at 243, 245 Bartlett Street, 239 and 241 Bartlett, which we've had for at least almost a hundred years. Totally agree with what my son has been saying. It, I don't know where you're going right now as far as partial improvement, not looking. I mean, obviously, you saw the rebuttals that I've had for the criteria that they've set forward. Don't know what more to do. I am going to emphasize, though, the easement, which, if you remember on all the meetings, I asked for the easement. And it was only until I got, I went for a Freedom of Information request that I got the copy and you got the copy because I asked for you to get it. The easement creates a whole confusion here. You have the right, the easement speaks to twenty-foot coming in from Bartlett Street as an easement, but it carries the entire property. That's the language in that. Okay? Having done so, the first plan that we ever saw in the first meeting we ever had was outlined for three separate spaces of six. Now we've removed one section. I didn't see any change in modification of the site plan. And I've sat in your seat quite a number of years. Normally, that comes in in the block on the plan itself. That was C1 when you're going to look at it. The one on the first meeting was three rows of parking. The one that you're receiving now, where'd that last row go, okay? And where's the explanation? Is the explanation because of the easement? Now, here's the contradiction in the easement. If you go with the easement, you come in on the 245 side, which gives the easement to 256, if I remember right. You come in, and with the new intent to expand on the 256 side, they need an entrance and an exit. They can't produce that off the 240 side. They will come in, and they will use their easement, and they will come in and out. They will directly face the traffic coming in in a one-way on the 240 side. They're going to be doing it appropriately, coming in on the 240 side and circling the building. 256 has no easement to be able to travel the property and exit the other way. They're going to come out their easement, which they have a perfect right to do. There creates the bottleneck. There creates the backed-up traffic on Bartlett Street and a life safety issue which pushes back towards my entrance and my all property. And as far as what he said, I would really appreciate to have the Lewiston Police Department and Officer Ganyan, who was assigned to that. And basically, the petitioners are the ones that wanted him there. I don't think that worked out the way they planned. The officer sat there and goes, this is crazy. Got him off Italian Bakery's land, got him off Mark?
Hi, good evening. My name is Rilwan Osman, R-I-L-W-A-N-O-S-M-A-N. I live at 92 East Cody in Lewiston. I am here to support the proposal that was submitted to the board by the mosque. As a member of the mosque, I know there are a lot of concerns that were raised by neighbors, and we are trying to address those issues so that we don't have concerns that our neighbors are saying. For the last couple of weeks, we worked hard. The mosque leaders worked hard to address the issues about the parking. Yes, there were some people who, as mentioned earlier, who are new to the city, who come into the mosque to pray, might not know the rules. But as a mosque leader, we explain to everybody who's coming to the mosque that you cannot park to the other side, everybody. Unless you're elderly or unless you have a disabled, you have to go park at the Coliseum. And that has worked. And we have a lot of volunteers who have been working on that. And thanks to the Lewiston Police, again, there were some challenges. We had to deal with it. Again, most of those were new people from Pennsylvania. And again, the mosque is public. Anybody can Google it. When it's time for prayer, people will come and pray without knowing the rules. And we had to meet and explain that to some of the people who came there with the police officers. So that has been the challenge that was happening. But anybody who's a member of the mosque, who has been here, who knows the issue, will not intentionally park inappropriately, will not park places where they should not be parking. So that's something that I just want to clear. And also the expansion of the parkings. We have been working hard again to raise some money for the renovation of the inside of the mosque. If we approved, to also do more parking. And the community is responding that positively. And again, definitely, there are some issues that we need to work on in terms of educating more into our community. Our communities cannot read and write, mostly, a lot of them. So we have to educate them in different ways so that they don't park where they should not be parking. They also listen to the direction of the volunteers that we have at the mosque. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Abdikadir Nagy, A-B-D-I-K-D-I-R, last name N-E-G-Y-E, resident of Lewiston. I'm standing here today in the support of Masjid Al Salaam proposal. Just also wanted to talk about the parking issue that we talked the last hearing and today also was brought up. As the previous speaker mentioned, the effort that has been doing the mosque, the volunteers has been involved to improve the parking issues. If we look, the work that has been done for the past few weeks in terms of the parking, in terms of the people who are entering the mosque has been handled well. So the issue that we're hearing now is the street parking. People who are either going, dropping people, or people making turn. And that is also something that many people who may not be familiar with the area. And I think the police officer was pro last time in intention to catch those people. So we're here to solve the issue, not to create a problem. So that was the intention for bringing the police officer, whoever is making the wrong turn, they should stop, ask for ID, make sure that they are given warning for the first time so that way they don't do it again. So for us, it worked well. So, and that was the intention. So inside the parking and the Coliseum place is working very well. We have volunteers who have been there directing cars who are entering in the mosque and also telling them where to park. When the twenty-five or whatever space the mosque has, then they can go to the Coliseum to shuttle. Based on the pictures, and probably you may already have seen that. So that thing has been working well. And also, what we talked about is the mosque, there's seven days of the week, yes, but there's no issue on other days. It's only Friday that people, maybe that number or each number comes on Fridays. On other days, the numbers is very, very low. You're not going to see any issue on the other days. So I just want to make sure it's only Friday that the issue has been happening and that we are working so hard to address that. And it was not only that. We've been working for the last few weeks, but this is a continuous thing that we'll be working on, having volunteers, different volunteers all the time to make sure they direct cars. And for those who are parking or making the wrong turn on the street, that doesn't, there's nothing we can do or the mosque can do about it because they are going the street, and it's hard to tell. You can't just point someone who's, they don't know where they're going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak in favor or against this proposal? Going once, going twice. Okay, in that case, I will be closing the public portion of the process and bringing it back to the board. So we're looking to discuss all of the individual approval criteria? Michael, is that what your?
I think all or most of the items I want to talk about, which came up during the open presentation as well, should fall under one of those twenty-three items.
Okay. So do you want me to read them one at a time, and we'll either?
We can have a vote on each one.
Well, not a vote, but not an actual vote.
In some places, I think we should. Okay.
So in that case, we'll have a vote?
Because we actually had a vote on all twenty-three that time several years ago.
Okay. So the approval criteria under Article thirteen, Section four, A, utilization. utilization of the site. The plan for development will reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support development. Finding, the building is large enough to accommodate additional occupancy. Planning Board set the occupancy at 94 and limited use to areas outside the northwest portion of the building. That's in 2012. Occupancy increases will be addressed in Criteria W below. The site can adequately accommodate the additional parking proposed with a safe circulation pattern and can handle the generated stormwater. And the recommendation is that the planning board finds that this matter, this standard, will be met. Discussion? Michael?
I'd like to start off because that verbiage, that last verbiage Lucy just read about will be met. It wasn't until a very specific item that I looked at that almost read a little bit differently than it read everywhere else, that it will be met, as in the future it will be met. I'm not willing to do that, just say that, okay, it'll be met, so let's approve it here. But if it read something more like it is met, then that would be, yeah, if it is met, then there's no reason why that particular item should stop the development review in its entirety. I don't know if everybody had a chance. I know I have not had a chance to read the Abada's comments on each of these items. I did read staff's, and that's why I have notes here on only a couple of them. But I see that the Abada has had other comments, and I'd like to digest those comments in the process. I was very willing to vote yes, like individual votes on these 23 items, on A, utilization of the site, but I'd like to just read these out loud for my edification and everyone else's. The standard will be met. Parking currently is in violation and has impacted Abada's due to over-intensification of parking needs. Increasing on-site parking will help, but increasing the number of people will quickly destroy all gains in added parking. Stormwater comment, Public Works, yes.
It's part of the notes that they handed out tonight.
This would have been the first sheet that was handed out?
Probably in this packet here.
It should be, I think, the last staple.
It was part of the correspondence received today by email.
Yeah, it's part of the correspondence. It has the pictures.
So number one, stormwater comment. Public Works does have concerns, the Abada. I met with the city engineer, Jeff Puley, this past March 7, 2024. Catch filter top may have to increase four to six inches. Due to uncertainty of drainage sheeting with reclaimed material being used, city engineer is unsure of reclaim regarding this sheeting capability or if the material will hold up, plowing, et cetera. That was the concern with regards to Criteria A from the Abada.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I think it's about what you're reading, but probably of staff.
Okay.
May I? I apologize.
Well, you asked of staff.
Yeah. In the documentation that Mr. Mercat's reading, the responses that he's sharing are not, are the responses of the individual who submitted these comments, and they are not necessarily the response. Like, that's not the city's official response from the city engineer?
That's right.
Okay. Just checking for my understanding.
Because if I, when I read the city's finding, and again, the city gives a finding, presume that we're going to vote in the affirmative, and the one catchphrase is, "The planning board finds that this standard will be met." I think it should be standard is met from the presentation. To read from the city's rationale, and it sounded good until I start seeing an opposing viewpoint. But finding, the building is large enough to accommodate additional occupancy. The planning board set the occupancy at 94 people and limited use to areas outside of the northwest portion of the building. Occupancy increases will be addressed, will be addressed in Criteria W below. The site can adequately accommodate the additional parking proposed with a safe circulation pattern and can handle generated stormwater. You can see where there's a totally different angle of prism here as far as, you can make an argument where Criteria A has been met. You can make an argument where Criteria A has not been met. And then you make a decision which one you believe fits. I think the Abada does raise some good concerns. I'm familiar with the fact that it is a very wet area back there. The comments about the stormwater played in that 156, what is 156th East Avenue today. It was totally different when I was a kid. It's not as flat. It's not flat today, but it was less flat then. And the water drains right down from Pleasant Street Hill, right through Bossy Heights and under East Avenue and under the new Connor School. I had concerns when the planning board is approving that particular site review because of what's underneath Connor School. But I think the Abada does raise some good concerns there. Will be met under another criteria. How can you address a different criteria when you refer to a different one? Yes, it would adequately accommodate the additional parking, and so that's very believable until you start thinking about the easement. And I'll talk about the easement later.
Okay. Do we vote on it now, or do we discuss it more? Do we have to vote on everything?
I identified at least two areas that we're required to, that it would be ideal if we discussed and made official findings, so a motion that the board finds, language, language. There's two areas as identified, and those are in gray on page nine. And so I think, and Member Mercat, please feel free to correct me, but I think the language of, "The planning board finds that this standard will be met." I interpret that in all of these areas that, for us to approve the application as a whole, we will have found that these have been met. And so I think that standard, as you've interpreted it, I'm comfortable with. I think the areas in which we have concerns are these areas on page nine.
Well, yeah, there's 23 specific criterias, and then there's more vermost discussion in general that may probably go to some of these items but weren't particularly listed under the item. They came after the 23rd item.
So what is the pleasure of the board? Do we, I mean...
I'm happy to make a proposal to start that discussion.
Sure. Go ahead, please.
I'd like to start discussion on a preliminary finding. For me, I guess, and maybe it's helpful to take a straw vote to move our discussion along and where we'd like to go, but as I stated earlier, there is, and I've looked online, and I don't know if it's the size of the PDF and my inability to download it, but I am not finding the original application. I'm finding the facts and findings, but not the original application, either online or what was provided to us.
Are you referring to the most recent?
I believe, based on the materials provided to us today, that everything that we're being asked to consider is referencing an application that was reviewed and discussed on January 8th, which, as the record shows, I was not here for.
Can I interject? I believe that the online version does have the full...
Just searched it five times, and I could not get it to load. It kept kicking me off on page 125 of 127. I don't believe that it's there.
Well, this weekend, I went back and forth between January 8th and March 11th, and there are things that are in one and not the other, and vice versa. It was very confusing. I can show Shannon the front page.
Here is my point. Based on the evidence provided to us, both the facts and findings and that which the applicant is reviewing and referencing behind us, there is inconsistencies that, should I have had a chance to have the original application, I would still want clarity on what we were actually discussing and voting on tonight. And so I'm not comfortable approving an application. What I would like to do is provide some discussion and potentially some findings that would give enough input to the applicant to resolve the discrepancies and have some guidance on occupancy and parking that would allow us to move forward with reviewing a future application that has resolved those and provided us something concrete. And I think for you to do that successfully and set us all up for success, there is some information and guidance that we need to find tonight to support that process. And so that is the, I don't believe that that's the genuine.
Yeah, that's the original.
And that's only the first few pages.
Great. Here's what I'm going to say. Wasn't provided to me in advance, still has discrepancies, and so regardless, even if that read beautifully and made me feel good, it's not lining up with what's being discussed. And I don't, I think this decision is important, and it's going to set precedent for future decisions in our city, and I'd like a very clear application that resolves all inconsistencies. That's my personal preference, and I don't know if it is useful to move the board in that direction.
Yeah, I think that is...
I'd like to start with one of the areas of discussion, if that is. I'm going to go for it. Nope? Go ahead.
Can I? Okay. So what I thought we were doing is that we were going to go through the 23 criteria, because I think staff had the viewpoint that we've had the full presentation at the January 8th, and that this was the, or these factors on whether the overall would be approved or not. For instance, the last time I went through the process and we had 23 votes, I voted against three, another board voted against one, and we were told by the then co-director, planning and co-director probably at the time, that we were obligated to vote four because not any one of the measures failed. I have a hard time with that, because if I thought that it failed on one, I should be able to vote against the total package. However, if that's the way it was done, and I can tell you that both no votes were split. So it was a six to one vote. Even if it was a five to two vote, it would have passed. So it's a process. It's worth doing, and to get to my real point here, if we go through each of these and if there are some here that we're unanimously in support of, then it's not anything that the applicant has to address. If there's a concern on some of them, maybe a level of a concern, maybe one person, it may be a majority of the board that has a concern on that item. And from what I'm hearing, the applicant is probably going to go back and sharpen their pencil and come back to us, and those would be the area, then they would be informed on what areas to do so. So I think that's the value of going through these and having the vote on all.
It just feels like the findings that are provided to us are referencing an application of which I do not have in front of me and I'm unfamiliar. And that those standards, all but those that I'm referencing on page nine, are consistent and traditional. There are, those standards are already laid out in that we use those standards and apply them to the applications in front of us, an area in which we don't have a standard to utilize today.
Can staff pull up the agenda from January 8th?
If the board would like us to, we could.
Okay, comments, please, from the other members of the board on...
I find that you have it up already, Shelley.
Amy, your comments, and then Alex.
I share Shannon's discomfort with this, because we've got so much material tonight. We don't have the original application. Nothing, there's no agreement between all this stuff that we're supposed to be making choices on. I think it's a waste of time to go through all this boilerplate stuff. But that we should address the few things that we have identified as we are, we really need more information from the applicant, because otherwise, it doesn't make any sense to me to go through these 23 things.
Well, I could bring up my concerns, and that may limit the concerns more than if we went through the 23. But if we don't go through the 23, we could come back at another meeting and something crops up that we didn't even think about. At Criteria A, I was all set with staff's so-called finding of fact until I read what the Abada had presented, and I'm not so sure that I could support that. The applicant wouldn't have the benefit of knowing what the concerns are, even if it's from only one member of the board on that item, if we didn't discuss it. And we only discuss things like the easement and the Coliseum agreement, the big things. I think there's two or three big things. And the reason I wanted this to be brought up is I wasn't sure if this applicant had done the full development review application, the same way we saw of the first applicant tonight, because the first applicant did address those 23 criteria. And there did seem to be some sort of difference in total number of criteria on the one that we do now have from staff on this particular item before.
Is that, sorry, was that the application that you just went by, Shelley?
That was.
The front page.
I believe I saw 61 as the proposed new amount of parking spaces. And the best of my recollection, that is not a number that is consistent with any of the examples we've discussed tonight.
Yep.
I think it's 51 and 25 is still existing. So, yeah, it's different than what the revised site plan showed.
Right. So really, the application is not anywhere near what they're really looking for at this point. So...
It's near, but the 48 that we, that I think we're being asked to approve, which is three less than the other one, those three is actually a pretty integral piece relative to the occupancy number.
Yeah, and to be fair, we're not even considering 48. We're only considering 23. The 25 of that 48 is already there. So I think this is all to say that there's a lot of moving pieces and that there's been a lot, I think, of discovery throughout this process. So certainly, getting all of the numbers clear and reflecting the current state rather than what was proposed over a month ago now is very important. I think what I'm hearing you say, Shannon, and I'm going to try and say it in different words and tell me if I got it wrong, is that there are a lot of sort of standard things that we look at for development review. And Michael, it sounds like you're saying that there might be some questions around that that are standard questions that we'd ask any applicant, based on sort of the information we have now. But what Shannon is saying is that there's sort of a new uncharted territory, and I believe it's probably around the question of, you know, the allocation of vehicles per person per, for square footage versus person in this prayer setting. And that's the new, that's the new meat that we do not have any guidance on. That's what we have to decide, and that's what we have to find. Is that, am I getting this right, Shannon?
Yes.
And so I think it would make a lot of sense, I don't personally have any problem going through the whole application and making sure that the applicant has all of the information that they need to bring back, current numbers, so that we can vote on a proposal that has everything there. But I do agree with Shannon, and I think we should address those issues first, because those are uncharted territory. They're new. We don't have process for it. We don't have a lot of, you know, historical standing here. So if we start with that first, see where we get on that, and then move from there, I think that, from an order of operations standpoint, I would prefer that.
I agree. Okay, I'm confused. I'm not sure where you guys want to go. So are we doing individual? Do we have to have a vote on individual? I mean, this is going to take forever.
I've prepared a motion to initiate a discussion, of which I would make the motion, if it pleased anyone on the board, then make a second. We would have discussion, and then have to address it.
Sure. Let's start with that and see where we go.
To offer a little context, both for notes and those who are attending today, on page nine of the facts and findings document provided to the planning board, halfway down the page, the board has been directed to clarify and make a finding around the determination of square feet that is equivalent to the amount of space one person uses in prayer and is equivalent to one seat. And this references, and I will make a reference to it, this references a specific set of standards that we must apply. And frankly, when those standards were written, most areas, most religious facilities likely had fixed seating. And this is the first time the board is being asked to discuss an area that does not have fixed seating for a religious assembly. So I would like to make a motion that the board finds that Article 12 Performance Standards, Section D, off-street parking, will apply 10 square feet per person for religious assembly when fixed or provided seating is not provided for the purpose of determining requirements thereof. You'll find this language is consistent with Section D, the auditorium space below it. And the number I am proposing is based that on the prayer mats and the applicant's own findings, which you will note is different than the national standard, the state standard, and the fire code standard. It is more generous. Okay. That's my motion.
I second it. Okay. Further discussion? Michael?
Now with respect to the motion, is that applicant-specific or is that changing part of our code?
It would be clarifying, I don't know that it would be changing, it would be clarifying that which is unaddressed. And so this is, just to walk us all through there, in Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 12 Performance Standards in Section 5, subsection, we're in D. It kinda wanders over from this page. All of these are parking standards for off-street parking requirements and the ways in which they are addressed, from single families all the way through. And when you get to the area of which we are being asked to apply based on precedent or current standards, you'll find that community centers, libraries, museums, civic clubs, theaters, places of indoor assembly, amusement or culture, religious facilities and similar uses states one space per four seats where fixed seating is provided, plus one space per 200 square feet of area otherwise available for assembly. And the board is being asked to assess the ratio of one parking space per how many people because there are not seats. And the applicant has provided in this process 10 square feet as the amount of space provided per occupant in religious assembly as applied by these standards. And so we've been asked to provide a finding that provides some direction and clarity of which you, the engineer, could then apply to the application and give us something concise. And so this is the motion that I'm preparing based on that context and precedent.
So we would be amending Appendix A, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 13 Performance Standards.
Twelve.
Twelve Performance Standards with respect to the area that starts out, community centers and the, the code that says one space per four seats.
I don't think we can do it this way. I think we can, we have to do it a different, this isn't where.
We're providing a finding and clarity. It is not a.
Finding for this application.
Yeah.
This is not a, an amendment to this. This is just a finding for this particular application.
Okay. Well, I understood that it was going to be a finding.
No, no, it's not a finding, we're not.
It is a finding.
It's a finding, but it's, it's not a, an amendment to this article.
Well, if it's not an amendment, then the finding would have to be no. Because it doesn't conform to what's in code currently. Unless we're seeking to change code in order to accommodate this applicant because their particular situation is a bit different than anything that's currently defined in code. Because code is talking about seats. And I just heard that because it's usually kneeling pads, that why we wanna go with 10 square feet. There's nothing in code that says 10 square feet right now. So in order to allow that to this development review application, we'd have to change the code.
You're not changing the code. All you're doing is amending the way of rationalizing the 10 square feet which we have to establish.
Because in the next one.
Establish 10 square feet, this is the norm, that they would be able to come up with an equation to say that one parking space is equal to X number of square feet.
The code allows for us to make a determination.
Okay, show, show me that.
Right here, under uses not specifically listed or able to be placed in one of the above categories. In that case, the board shall determine what is an appropriate, what is an appropriate one. Sufficient spaces to accommodate normal parking demand without the use of parking required on the street. Number of required spaces shall be determined by the planning board.
The major park.
Right. So we would be just making that determination because it does not make, it does not meet any of the other.
Okay, what, what was read was up above.
Yes, I get, yes, I get that.
I, I understand that we have leeway. Okay.
Okay. So in that case, we have, any further discussion?
No.
Okay. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
I'm sorry.
Did you have?
I just wanted.
Well, I, I asked for if you had any questions and nobody said anything.
We'll keep going.
No, no, go ahead.
I was gonna ask the applicant, are prayer rugs a universal size? Are they basically a standard size or is this something that will change from mosque to mosque typically?
It's universal. It will not change to mosque to mosque. It's exactly the same.
Okay. All right. So Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy?
No.
Michael Marcott?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Sebisson? Yes. Okay. So we find that 10 square feet is the criteria that we're going to use.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on, so now we're going to address each of the articles? Is that what you still wanna do? We're gonna go, we're gonna start with A and, and work our way down? Okay. Well, I've read utilization of the site. The plan for development will reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support development. I've read the finding already. Do I need to do it again?
No.
Okay. So do we find that the standard will be met?
Yes.
On a specific application?
On this, this is, this particular application. Okay? So we're, we're not talking about general everybody across the street, the city. We're talking about this application.
This application of which is presented to in reference with different numbers. And so we're being, we're discussing one by one the criteria relative to that application. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Roger Dupree? Is, so.
Amy, I'm sorry. I just, I just wanna make sure we're trying to go through these and say yes or no. It meets the standard or it doesn't, even though we don't have accurate numbers. So this first one says, the planning board set the occupancy at 94, blah, blah, blah. But what we're saying is, we think it can accommodate more than 94. That's what we'd be agreeing with right now.
Well, it, this, it's set, we set the applica, the occupancy at 94, it should say in 2012. Okay? So that's.
Right, but what we're agreeing to.
And we're saying that it can accommodate more.
More than 94. That's, that's all this thing says is, we think.
That it can accommodate more.
It actually says the site can adequately accommodate the additional parking proposed with a safe circulation pattern and can handle generated storm water.
Generated storm water.
I'm unclear on what's being proposed.
Correct.
Okay. I'm happy abstaining from each of these votes of where that clarity relative to the application isn't available. And this could be a very useful exercise.
Michael?
And I'm looking at this a little bit differently and for the first time now while I'm sitting here. Because the finding does say one thing, but the finding doesn't necessarily reflect the language in the approval criteria. Utilization of the site, and I didn't catch this the first time I read through it this weekend. The plan for development will reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support development. When I read that, at a conversation with a public works individual responsible for such work in this city, that, I'm losing my place here, but maybe I'm on the wrong page. Public Works does have concerns. City engineer says that the catch filter top may have to increase four to six inches due to the uncertainty of drainage sheeting with reclaimed material which is different than asphalt being used. City engineers unsure reclaim regarding the sheeting capability or if the material will hold up. Does the plan for development, that's the development review application, reflect the natural capabilities of the site to support the development? At this point, I would have to say no.
Why? So there's no motion required and we're just taking a straw poll and you're calling the roll on yea or nay on the findings being accurate? Is that the process?
Is that, is that what I'm doing?
Is that how you did it before? That's, that's so.
Well, the last time we did it, it was like official to lead up to the overall vote. So I think in that case, it required a motion and second. This time, it may be just an opportunity to give the applicant an opportunity to understand where the concerns are.
I thought this is what we were doing, was just giving them a direction, not.
In that case, we just, a straw poll would be sufficient.
Right. I, I, I don't think we need to do motions for each one of these because we're asking them to come back with a better, a new application which reflects the actual, the actual amounts that they wanna do. This is supposed to be just giving them direction on what to put in the new application. That's how I understand this.
I, I would agree, since you aren't ready to make a decision tonight and you don't have the final application in front of you.
So, so we don't need motions and, and that kind of thing, other than the motion that we're, we did and voted on that is giving them the 10 square feet that they wanted in the first place.
Exactly.
Okay. Mark?
So do we not make a determination about this application before us?
Um, you will.
As in either approving it or denying it tonight?
That's up to the board to decide whether you're ready to make that decision tonight or not.
It doesn't make sense to, at least in my case, from my perspective, it makes no sense to tell them to go back and redo the application without.
First, you know.
Denying it, denying this application and saying it does not meet the standards, right? Am I the only one that thinks that?
No.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think the intention is, let's go through the approval criteria.
And say why you're denying it.
What, what, what we're, what we're, what we're concerned about. And then at the end, there will be a vote where it will be either approved or denied by the board.
And, and as we give them the straw poll, as we talk about each of these items, they will know what to change, what to keep, what to address in the new application.
Or a revised application.
Or a revised application.
If you don't take action tonight, but you continue it, then they can revise their application.
Which is a different action than voting down the application in front of us.
Then if you turn it down and they have to submit a new application.
Right.
And requesting a new one.
Yeah.
Right. So we can just continue it again.
I believe, I believe that that's part of the question that you're fundamentally asking.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not a big fan of continuing it for a third time.
Fourth.
It's fourth, actually.
At this point, it makes, you make a decision, you say yea or nay.
I've yet to see a revised application come forward from any of those continuances. Would that be accurate?
Right. No, there's never been a revised application, correct? No.
So we wouldn't have to vote it down to get a revised application and we could make a clear request for a clear revised application, which would be a separate and different action than voting it down.
So what's the difference between a revised application and a new application? Procedurally.
Fees?
Is it really just fees?
Yep, we would ask for a new fee if it's a new, like a new applic, like if you deny it.
If we deny it, they, and they have to do a new application, they have to have fees. If we continue it requesting a revised application, then they don't have to pay the fees.
Okay. Then I'm fine with continuing it for a revision.
Okay.
Just to, just for the extra fees.
Okay. So I'm gonna go, so on A, just a straw poll, Roger, yes or no? Do they meet it or will they meet it or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark? Michael?
No.
Shannon?
I don't have enough information.
Okay. Amy?
Yes.
Alex?
I don't have enough information.
And I will vote yes. So that's five to, to abstain. Traffic movement.
Wait, wait, hold on. Is that four, four to one?
It's not a vote.
Well, it's not a vote, it's just that, but I'm just keeping track.
I still want an accurate accounting.
Okay.
Even if it's not with people's names, the accurate accounting, if I counted right, was four to one. Because when you said it was two abstentions, you left me right out.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Michael.
Would it be helpful to say what additional information you need?
The application?
So revised application.
The revised application?
Yeah.
Okay.
The current application, any application?
And specifically for the value of the applicant, they need to discuss the.
Stormwater handling.
Stormwater handling and the reclaim, use of reclaim and such.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm a, I'm not gonna, I'm an architect. I, I'm not sure that I could carry back to the engineer, who isn't here this evening. And I'm not trying to delay this, obviously. But if you have a, either a special knowledge or qualifications to, to give certain knowledges of this, I want more direction from some of this because if you just, if, if it says, well, why don't you like it?
Well, according to.
I'm just, I'm just trying to be sure I understand. I may not, please.
Okay. But according to the neighbor, Yabutter, who has spoken to Public Works, Public Works has, has issues. So my suggestion would be that your engineers speak with Public Works to make sure that it meets the criteria.
Okay.
Yes, Shannon?
With due appreciation to Yabutter's and comments and board members' references to those comments, I would like to see an application that has been reviewed by all departments like we normally do and their official comments on the record about the concerns of the application is what, what I would consider and discuss and would be the formal direction you would need, sir, as well as with the engineers to complete what you want. And while what we've been provided tonight might be accurate, it is not something I can defend or stand on in a decision. And we would need that directly from city departments on city letterhead, of which again, has not been provided inconsistency.
Okay, okay. I'm, I'm getting a better picture of what, what it is you're looking for because of course, we went through this once.
Right. But that's what we're doing. We're asking you to revise the application, submit it to planning staff, and they will submit it to the different departments. The departments will give comments and then you can address those comments if they, whatever they are, whether they approve or not.
Your process of revision would go through the same process with updated information. And prior to arriving before us next time, you would have worked that out with each department and we would be given a clear list of conditions, including raise the drain by two inches, of which we would approve and discuss. And so that process is part of the revision process.
Wait a minute, you just said that after these people said example, raise something by a drain by two inches. Head, head point, I don't care. The, the point is, then you will discuss it afterwards?
Sir, you.
No. Go ahead. Sorry.
You are hearing tonight discussion of third-party information of which is not through formal channels. And while that might inform or give you cause for concern and opportunity for further clarity with city staff, it is not something I'm comfortable acting on tonight. So what you need to know is that you will allow the board to continue to deliberate, clarifying questions we asked of staff after the meeting has closed. You will go through a revised application process which will be vetted with staff in different departments. You will get the information that you need in that process at that time and it will be resolved with a list of any conditions provided to us when we see the revised application for full consideration next time. That's the process you'll follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So traffic movement into and out of the development area. The developer has made adequate provision for traffic movement to, of all types, into and out of the development area. Finding there is no anticipated significant impact on the levels of service of the access routes within one half mile of the entrance. Police, fire and Public Works.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Why are we going through this if he's gonna go back and fill out a new application? I mean, this is ridiculous.
We're giving him guidance.
We're giving him nothing. What he's doing here, he's got the information he needs. He's gonna fill out a new application, they're gonna go through staff and all the progress.
And he's gonna come back as ill-prepared as the last.
I'm terrified of him.
And he's gonna come back as ill-prepared as the last time?
No, they will have the information that they need.
I don't think so, not unless he hears what our concerns are. I got some concerns on the colisee agreement, the easement, the traffic.
Might we go through the list of concerns instead of taking it letter by letter?
Well, no, no. I, I can bring it up the next time and we can go letter by letter. And I'll probably say, I don't like one of the letters and then I'll vote against the entire development review as well.
So no, you prefer not to bring it up?
I prefer to, I prefer not to do that and go through this and give him guidance. So I had some major concerns with the one that Lucy wasn't able to finish.
Mr. Dupree, I think that's your answer.
Why don't, just a suggestion, why don't you let each person on the board just check off the places you have questions and let's give it to you.
To give you some edification, I suspect out of the 23, I did a count while we were talking.
Well, I'm not suggesting.
Okay, okay.
Well, if you let me finish, there were 12 items that I don't have any comment on. So it's not 23 items to have comments on, it's 11.
Okay.
And it's the official list of criteria and the ones of the code.
Maybe you could ask each letter if you'd like it to be discussed by the board.
Okay. All right. Traffic movement, I think we need to, there needs to be significant development or discussion on, including the easement that is now, or that has been brought up to 256. I understand that some of the, you know, the traffic, it, it really doesn't make any sense the way the parking is set up and the entrance in and out for 256 doesn't work. Does anybody else on the board have any comments regarding the traffic movement that I have not stated?
Yes. And just to look over this. Yes, and just to look over this finding again, which wasn't completed. Now, there is no anticipated significant impact to the level of service of the access routes within one-half mile, not sure whether one-half mile comes into play, but I'm sure it's appropriate, of the entrance. Police, fire, and public works did not present any concerns regarding the traffic movement and volume of the redesigned parking lot expansion. Planning Board finds that this standard will be met. I have concerns with the fact that in our original memo back on January eighth, it said that planning had no comments. You left yourself conspicuously out of the finding on this, and also, within this particular item, and especially since the criteria talks to in and out of the development area, and I'm thinking the parking lot itself in this particular case, you get an easement, like we heard earlier tonight, that covers twenty feet into two fifty-six. No, did I get that backwards? No, into two forty, no, twenty feet from the property line between two forty and two fifty-six to the left, when you're looking at them from Bartlett Street, twenty feet. Now, the curb cut for that is in front of two forty. So, Mears has to travel across two forty, and they have an easement all the way up the property line, twenty feet, to come down that lane, uh, come down that lane, because they're usually parking against the building, and there would be no lane in front of their building if they even had a curb cut. We just heard a couple of weeks ago, a land purchase application, whatever you wanna call it. What, how do they come back out of that property? Are they gonna come back down the side of their building where there's no curb cut? Are they gonna come down into that one-way lane?
And, and that's what I was saying.
Will you let me finish? No, maybe I'm repeating what you're saying, but in different words. So, we, so somebody comes in off of Bartlett Street and comes down that now redesigned, because it's no longer three sets of six, it's two sets of six and then three parallel, giving a little bit more width to that travel lane, which is a one-way travel lane. And for the mosque, that travel lane is designed to go around the building, works perfectly for the mosque. But there is an easement on the deed that we now finally have a copy of, that talks to this. And that hasn't been vacated, so what, what, what does the, so there is something on the deed that restricts the Yabutter that has an easement to come back out. Is he gonna be given, they, the entity that's at two fifty-six, are they gonna be given an easement to do the, around the mosque as well, a further easement? But it has not been registered yet, hasn't been thought about. In one particular document a couple of years ago from Woodbury Hill Professionals, it says the mosque has an agreement with the neighbor for current and future access. It is not, however, in the form of easements. That's false. Now, we're hearing about an easement, and we asked, we heard a request for it several times between January eighth and today, and we finally got it for today. And it reads pretty clear, I mean, yeah, there's no sketch. That happens a lot in the, in the registry of deeds. You go looking for something, there's no sketch, and the language is archaic or legalese. But I think it's pretty clear that there's an easement that goes, that allows Mears in and out of their property, because they don't have a curb cut, right across the travel lane that's now one-way with this development review. So, that's something that needs to be addressed significantly in the reapplication.
Shanna?
I believe that you'd find the majority of what you just referenced should be addressed, this is for the applicant's sake, in the internal vehicular circulation.
Well, it probably fits in both. I won't have to repeat myself in D then.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so, we've given some pretty specific description, I mean, do, do we have to have a vote on this?
No.
Okay.
There's no votes.
Access to the site. I think traffic movement, access to the site, and internal vehicular circulation is all pretty much, has, and pedestrian, well, pedestrian hasn't, but I think Michael has addressed it pretty close. So, now, let's jump to pedestrian circulation.
I'm sorry, Terri, just make one quick comment on the whole, the whole issue of the easements, guys. So, the easement is a big deal, and the internal traffic pattern is a big deal. And so, it, and I know in speaking with the Terrios the other day, a big concern is like, why are we looking at just one parcel? We should really look at both of them, both properties, to understand how they're gonna work together. And so, in a, in a revised application, I would hope that the traffic pattern includes the traffic pattern for Mears, right? So, that you're looking at the whole thing as like one property, and if the mosque and Mears have an informal agreement right now, maybe one thing that the applicants should think about is getting another easement, right? That does allow Mears people to exit out the other side of the building.
I know, I understand.
Okay. Okay, pedestrian circulation, the development plan will provide for a system of pedestrian circulation within the development. Finding no changes to pedestrian circulation are proposed. The development currently connects to the existing sidewalk on Bartlett Street. Planning Board finds that this standard will be met. Any, yes, Alex?
Something I would suggest is, since you're encouraging folks to park at remote facilities, and they might be using the trail behind your property, maybe including those as a suggestion, not as a requirement.
Sure, maybe like a crosswalk or something.
Yeah, something, I know there was gonna be a drainage swale in the back, thinking about access to the back of the facility since you will be looking at other options to get there.
Okay.
So, just a comment.
Sure. Stormwater management, adequate provisions shall be made for the, and I think that kinda goes with the utilization of the site. You know, make sure that, that that is addressed as well as, as, and erosion control goes in there as well. Water supply, sewage disposal, utilities, that's all, you know, street, I mean, city utilities, so I don't think that, that that has to be commented on.
Are any of these year eleven?
Are, yeah, any of these year eleven, Michael?
Well, um, you seem to go from the straw poll to no straw poll. Just clarification, so, I, I do not support A, B, C, or D. I do support E. And you said that F was like the first four, which I.
Well, I think F goes with, with the, the utilization of the site.
Yeah, which, which one number, letter?
That's A.
Yeah, and you're right, probably goes with multiple items, but A as well. And then G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and I have no, no comment on any of those.
Okay, anybody have any concerns with any of those? Okay. So, we're up to waste disposal. The proposed development will provide for adequate disposal of solid wastes and hazardous wastes. Finding, the existing dumpster on-site is owned and operated by Mears at two fifty-six Bartlett Street, and is used by the mosque and two fifty-six Bartlett Street facilities. Waste management is the license hauler and is contracted to pick up weekly and more frequently on an as-needed basis. Comments that we have received are that the, um, the dumpster is actually within the twenty-foot easement. It can't stay there, and so it will have to be addressed in the revised application as to where that is going to be. It's going to have to be somewhere other than in that twenty-foot easement. Comments?
And also perhaps, to what Amy said earlier, having a formal agreement rather than an informal one that can be, that can be demonstrated in the application would be really helpful.
No problem.
That would be very good, okay? Any other comments on, on that one? The lot layout. Lot layout shall conform to Article Two Definitions, Net Lot Area, and Article Five Administration and Enforcement, Section Three. Finding, the existing lot meets the requirements for highway business zoning district. No change to the lot lines are proposed. Now, what are we talking about in this, Shelley?
Subdivision, which is not happening.
Okay, so that has, so that it's not an applicable thing, okay. Landscaping. The development plan will provide for landscaping to define street edges, break-up parking areas, soften the appearance of the development, and protect abutting properties from adverse impacts of the development. Finding, landscaping is required along street edges, parking areas adjacent to street frontage, and for commercial development adjacent to residential properties. This proposal for a rear parking expansion abutting municipal property does not trigger landscaping requirements. I know that it does not trigger landscaping requirements, but I know that in prior discussions, the planning board has suggested that at the back of the parking lot adjacent to that walking trail, that there be some buffering, that we recommend that there would be some buffering added to protect the parking, the, the path from the parking area. Shanna, you have questions?
I don't know who the finding is coming from, so, but I just don't know that I agree with it. If we're talking about changing curb cuts, then we're making alterations to the street facing of the parking, and we would expect some conformance with landscaping requirements in that scenario. It is not that we are only making changes to the rear of the lot based on the discussion that I've heard tonight, and so I would want clarity on that. If there are changes to the sidewalk, pedestrian pathways, and street access, including curb cuts, then we are indeed making changes to the front end, which, in my opinion, would trigger landscaping and would provide an opportunity for discussion on that item.
Yes, Michael?
Shanna brings up some good points. I can clarify why there's language here, because I brought it up at the last meeting about district regulations, and I think staff corrected me, Stan corrected, that, that the parcels along both sides of Bartlett Street are not in the overlay. Yeah, I think you discuss it after, after the set of twenty-three, it's part of a discussion somewhere. And that's, because I brought up.
The design overlay you talked about?
So, this is in the highway business, which is not part of the design district.
Correct, but, but when I brought it up the last time, nobody said, it's not, yeah, off-base here, nobody said that. When we got into a discussion about buffering in the back, so that the people using the walkways aren't impacted by parking lots and stuff, which is something we're concerned about.
I think that was a discussion for selling property adjacent.
Correct, it came up on the other property, but it would apply to both properties when you think about it, because there's no fencing currently behind either lot. But that's why it came up, that's why there's a comment from the Yabutter. There is actually a response from staff. It was not, not really one of my areas that I was gonna comment on, but because discussion happened, I thought I'd just clarify why it's there.
Okay. So, I, I don't see where, I mean, putting shrubbery in the front of this building would not be conformed to the rest of the neighborhood.
True, yeah, yep.
I mean, you know, there's no requirement in, I mean, I, I don't think that, that, you know, if there's to be any landscaping, it would be in, in the back to, to separate it from the trail, not, not necessarily that we're saying they need to put trees in the front, because they're not gonna live.
My comments are, my, to clarify, my comments are referencing the fact that we are making alterations in the front, and that the finding here is referencing that it is only triggered if there is, there is not being triggered because the activity is only in the rear. And I am saying that what I've heard here tonight, which is not something I'm seeing, is that there are changes to the curb cut, and there are changes to the front, and so it would trigger that discussion. I don't know what the finding of that discussion is, or what the applicant would provide us in a revised application relevant to that. I am just merely saying that it would, in my opinion, trigger it if we are changing the, the curb cuts in the front.
Okay.
Hard for me to have discussion with information not provided.
Okay, shoreland relationship, it's, this is not in the shoreland, open space, that's not applicable. Technical and financial capacity. We do wish to have a, we find that there should be a letter of showing financial capacity included with the application.
Can we discuss that and/or move on it? I just, I don't, I disagree.
Okay.
I think the language provided to us, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant provides proof of financial capacity for the cost of the project is indeed important. But I don't think that it is important for us to get the proof of financial capacity with the application, because that would be not normal for us.
Yeah, that's fine, Michael?
I, I don't agree that it's not normal, I know that we've gone down the slippery slope of allowing it to happen, and we should never have. And maybe I need to readjust the fact that I should vote against every development review application before us in the future if it does not have it. First applicant tonight did have it, you noticed I made a comment at the time about it. We, we noticed that there was a, right on the application form, there's a request for value of the project. It's listed as fifty-nine thousand four hundred, and that comes with a letter from Saint Laurent that had a thirty-day, pardon, native, the word sounds odd, window. But it had a thirty-day window, so it's no longer in effect, and I don't believe it was in effect at the January eighth meeting. But we were asked to act on the development review application at that night, and that could've just gone right by us. And we might have, I might have even agreed that night to do it as a condition. I'm no longer supportive of doing it as a condition. If the applicant here tonight is going to give us a new application, go get another estimate, put it on the, on the new front page of the application, so that we know, and get a letter from a bank or whatever institution, because I don't think it's just banks, that says that you have the financial capacity. And then there's no concern here, because if, if we agree to it and just let it go down the road, all kinds of things can happen.
Okay, I'll do a straw poll, okay, Amy? Well, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna, I'll do a straw poll for whether we allow it to be provided at the, as a condition, instead of as part of the, okay. So, if you think it should be part of the application, vote that, and/or if you think it can be a condition of approval.
So, maybe your straw poll would ask each board member if they are comfortable with proof of financial capacity being a condition for occupancy?
Correct.
And then one would say, yes, I am, or no, I would like it with the application.
Right, okay, Alex?
For issuance of a building permit, not occupancy.
Not, yeah, it's building permit, not, okay. So, are you, okay, so, are you in favor of it is, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant provides proof of financial capacity for the cost of the project? Roger?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michael?
No.
Shanna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Lucy? Yes. Okay. Buffering, well, we've discussed buffering in, in a couple of lands, in landscaping. I think buffering in landscaping, we talked about buffering or doing some general buffering towards the, the walking trail behind, unless someone else has comments. Compliance with district regulations, fine. Designed consistent with performance standards, the finding, they are, they, they will, or they are, I think. Any comments? No? Okay, so that's, that's the last of those. So, I would entertain, so, do we need a motion for continuance? Yes?
Uh, there's one other discussion, I know.
Yeah, okay. No, but I'm just, I'm, I'm just getting that information.
My apologies.
No, that's fine. So, do we need a motion for requesting that they come back with a revised application?
No, you could just advise the applicant of that, and then you would do a motion to continue.
Okay.
I just was pointing out that.
Whoops. Yeah, we, we need a continuance.
I was just pointing out that criteria W is where a lot of the discussion items are. You've already made a determination as to how you're going to handle an equivalence for one seat, so that's perfect. If there's anything else there that the board wants to discuss tonight, you don't need to, but I'm just pointing out that there is quite a bit there.
There is one other item that's been brought up and is in our document, which is what I was gonna.
Go ahead.
One of the discussion items that is not clear in the findings to date and is at the bottom of page nine, again, of the memo earlier reference, is referencing the sometimes called fee simple, and this is in accordance with Section seventeen D. To allow required off-street parking to be located up to thirteen, twenty feet from the property line, such off-street parking shall be held in fee simple by the owner of the use served or in such other tenure as assures continued availability for parking as long as the particular land will be needed for such use. By the planning director before the request is considered, no, sorry. Provided that if tenure is other than ownership in fee simple, the form of tenure shall be approved by the planning director before the request is considered. planning director before the request is considered by the appropriate deciding body. Evidence of fee simple ownership or approved tenure shall be required, and such lots shall be located with non-residential districts. And what I would offer from my perception, and encourage other board members to chime in, resulting in whatever discussion and straw poll may come, the documentation provided in, with the application from the Coliseum would not be found in compliance with this particular area. And to be really clear, there's a couple of reasons for that. The Coliseum's agreement is referenced to two seasons and one day. And if we are to determine occupancy and parking relative to occupancy, then that's the occupancy. It is not the occupancy that we can approve, or the parking that we can approve on a particular day of the week or a particular time. And so the, whether it's with the Coliseum or you resolve this elsewhere, the opportunity to address this in the revised application, should you want, one of the public comments, should you want an occupancy approval for prayer and use that is higher than that which the theoretical 23 and 25 spots would allow at the four-to-one ratio? If you're looking to get more people in the building than the occupancy allows by basic parking on the math tonight, then there would need to be an agreement that meets these needs of which I just described. And that those needs would require, in perpetuity, so as long as this property is being used as a religious facility for assembly, as required by code and as the applicant is acknowledging, then any additional parking that you're using in an agreement would need to meet that timeline. So the parking available to you off-site would have to meet any day, any time, for as long as the mosque is operating. It could not be constrained based on day, by week, or certain number of years. That's what this fee simple language is about. And that which has been provided does not meet that. And if we were to review an application that said, we want to get 300 people in the building, and that's okay, because we've got 50 spots off-site, and here's, I know, sir, we're beyond question and answer.
I'm talking to myself.
Okay, push the microphone back then, so away from you. If you would want to do that, and to get an occupancy higher than what your on-site parking would allow, you would need to have an agreement that clearly addresses these items, that is not restricted in any way, forever, or 99 years. So I just want to make that really clear, that, and that it is within 13, 20 feet.
Right.
Right? So that's, I just want to, like, that is a discussion point of which a revised application would have to clearly address, or not call in the need for a fee simple parking arrangement with off-site parking. And that your occupancy and parking would be that which you can provide physically on-site.
Here. Okay? Okay, any, all right, so at this time, I think we've addressed all of the checklist.
Checking the checklist on the back list.
And so at this point, I'd entertain a motion for a continuance with the direction to the applicant to return with a revised application with the spec, you know, the comments that we have made. And to get a list of the items that we have discussed, you know, speak with staff, they'll help you, and that, I think, is what we need to do at this point.
I have a point of order. Point of order has to be there.
Okay, fine. Go ahead.
Will this, will the abutters be re-notified, since this is a substantial change with the application and even the information?
We're going to repeat that into the microphone for the record. The question was, will the abutters be notified with the revised application for, if a continuance is issued tonight?
If a continuance is to, excuse me, because the applicant, the, anyone who's interested in the project is here tonight, they're on notice that you're going to be continuing this application. They can always reach out to staff to find out what agenda it's going to be on, but typically we wouldn't send out new abutter notices every time something is moved on the agenda. The assumption is that people who have taken an interest are there. It's the same as if an application had to be tabled on a given night. We wouldn't re-notify people. They would already have been notified that the application was going to come before, and they would either be at the meeting, or they would ask staff when it's being moved to.
Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion, someone, please.
Actually, sorry.
Yeah?
We also didn't talk about the ratio for the new parking.
I think that's...
When you say the ratio, I think we did.
We did, because we talked about the 10 square feet. And we're talking about four people.
Four to one.
Four to one, okay.
That's, I just wanted to make...
Yeah, we did discuss the four to one.
I do want to make clear, it's not just four to one for the entire...
Building.
Building. It's four to one for the number of seats, in this case prayer mats, allocated for the prayer area, plus the, then additional spaces...
Right.
For the office spaces.
Right, so if you've got two offices, you need spaces for those two people.
Right. Okay. I just want to make that clear.
Right.
It's not just a simple, well, it's 180 people, occupancy, divide that by four, and that's how many parking spaces. No, it has to be much, much more specific.
Much more specific, okay.
And specifically, when we made the finding for 10 square feet per person, that was replacing the whole, the whole bit of language there that says four seats plus...
Right, right, right.
Additional space for 200 square feet of gathering space.
Correct.
So all of that, it's just...
10 square feet.
10 square feet.
Per person.
Per...
Plus the administrative use, which was part of our discussion.
Plus the administrative use.
Administrative use, that's its own thing.
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay, just making that clear.
Okay. Will someone make a motion, please? I would appreciate that we have a continuance.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue this evening's agenda item. Thank you, ma'am. Sijul Salam Mosque, item B of tonight, to our, to a future planning board meeting, at which time the board would look forward to revised and complete application in the packet.
Yeah, and I might clarify for the board that at this time, there's no agenda items for your 3/25 meetings, so likely your next meeting would be for eight.
Okay.
So that's probably the soonest that they would be back.
Okay. All right, and do I have a second?
Second?
Roger, nine.
Okay. And further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Mark Roy, sorry. Michael Marcot?
Yes.
Shanna Cox?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Good luck. Other business? Do we have any other business? Okay. In that case, I will go to the reading of the minutes for the February 26th meeting. I made a couple of changes to the minutes, I did a clarification, and in the second item, MNBLLC, it lists me as first, Rick and I as first cousins. I'm being technical.
This is my favorite edit ever.
I'm being technical. We are first cousins once removed. And if anyone knows anything about genealogy, it's first cousins, mother, parents are siblings, first cousins, the next generation is second cousins, and if you're talking about one generation and the second, then that's where you get the removed. So I'm being picky, and there are a couple of red periods that I can't find anymore, but that were there. And, Michael, you have a comment?
Yeah, on page four, item five, V, other business, A, second paragraph, pretty much right at the bottom of that long paragraph, where it says, "Michael Marc," I even went back to the tape for this one. "Michael Marc reiterated that the land, it should be 'could,' not 'would,' bring more value to the city if it were to go out to bid." I mean, I'm not, I can't stand on wood, I'm not an appraiser.
You can, it's a very solid material.
Do I have a motion with the amendment?
Motion as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a whole bunch. Roger?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Shanna?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
You were, were you there at that, you were not at that meeting?
But we can vote.
You can still vote.
We clarified that.
Oh, yeah, that's true, we did. And Alexander?
Yes.
And Lucy, yes. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Yay!
Alexander.
I do love that she says Alexander.
I know.
I mean, it's what it says on the nameplate.
Well, it is, you know?
It is my name.
Yes, if you're too lazy as an African, I'm going to get that letter. I'm just going to vote against it, that's all.
Which letter, Lucy?
The financial capacity. I don't think there was an option. There was never a condition of approval in past years. I don't know when it slid into that.
I mean, I don't know that there aren't some applications where, I'm in agreement with you, but there are applications, and I know this from my business inside things, that a bank won't put together a guarantee, they won't put a commitment letter of financial funding together, until we do our job that says, okay, those are combined, or, okay, you don't need to have the parking, so you can make the building that big for your industrial base. We don't do the finding that makes X, Y, Z happen.